Good evening. The Board now reconvenes this work session meeting of the Plano ISD Board of Trustees in open session at 6:42 PM on April 24th, 2018 at the Plano ISD Administration Center. I am Ms. Evander, President of the Plano ISD Board of Trustees. We will conduct our meeting focusing on the district's two major goals. Ensure the continued improvement in student learning and ensure the efficient use of resources. Let me introduce my fellow trustees and staff. Seated to my left are Sarah Bonzer, Superintendent of Schools; Nancy Humphrey, Board Secretary; Trustee Tammy Richards; and Trustee Jerry Chambers. Seated to my right will soon be Board Vice President David Staley, who is on his way; Trustee Dr. Yoram Solomon; and Trustee Angela Powell; and Executive Assistant to the Superintendent Board of Trustees Denise Gillespie. The first item on our agenda is an item for discussion and action, an item that closure is required for. The Assistant Superintendent for Academic Services, Dr. Katrina Hasley, will introduce the discussion and revised appointment of the local District of Innovation Committee members to replace members no longer with the district. Dr. Hasley?
Yes, thank you. I have submitted a list of committee members that we're recommending to serve on the District of Innovation Committee. As you stated, several committee members in the original committee are no longer here, so the ones who are would, of course, continue to serve, and we would request that the new list, listed by position instead of individual name, be approved as the committee to continue that work.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the revised appointments?
Yes, I do.
And do I have second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes. Thank you. All right. Now, the rest of the agenda is for information only. And the first item for our consideration is going to be presented by the Assistant Superintendent for Campus Services, Susan Modicet, who will introduce the class rank in GPA study recommendations. Ms. Modicet?
Thank you, President Evander. I am going to invite Dr. Lisa Thibodeau, who helped chair this committee, to come join me. And Lisa is going to start us off.
Good evening, President Evander and Board of Trustees. We are on behalf of several groups of folks who've been doing some work around class rank and GPA. We're here to share some recommendations and share the committee's work with you so you kind of understand the process they've gone through. You may remember that we were here about a year or so ago and had gotten as far as making some class rank recommendations. It was advised at the time that it would be wiser to bring that forward along with some weighted GPA recommendations at the same time. So, in order to do that, we put together a couple of additional committees. In the timeline, you can see here, I look at this as two separate studies, the class rank task force work that began in 2015, and then the GPA, weighted GPA work that started in this past school year. And this information is also in your final report document that you have there. So, following some recommendations from the Board, we created this study structure a little bit differently by having two different committees working in a complementary fashion to look at all of the factors involved in this topic. In addition to that, we sort of look at this as five separate structures. We had the advisory committee, we had the work-study committee, then we brought in an independent facilitator, someone not employed in the district who could facilitate the meetings, kind of an unbiased facilitation. We had a consultant that we will introduce to you this evening, who can share some information. And then, several of us served as meeting organizers to just sort of facilitate the meetings and be the go-betweens between these two committees. So, the work-study committee and then the advisory council. So, in your final report document, there are more details around the membership of this work-study committee. Let me refer you to that page there. So, the first work-study committee group, what, I'm sorry, sir?
Page four.
Four, thank you, yes. The first work-study committee was put together with teachers, counselors, campus administrators, district staff. We also included, in the teacher group there, we included folks who could represent both the core courses and folks who could represent the elective courses. Their primary work was to do the work, to go out and search the literature, find the information, current practices, policies from other districts, and then to form those into some ideas, find some trends, some meaningful recommendations, and craft them such that they could be brought forward to the advisory committee, who could then provide some feedback. And then that work-study group would, again, respond to the feedback from the advisory committee. So, I'm gonna, and there's, that refers to the page that's in your document if you want more specific information about who was on the work-study. The advisory council group then, in turn, was made up of mostly parents, and had students and teachers on that group also, some counselors and a couple of campus administrators. And their work was really to take the ideas from the work-study committee and push back against them, consider them from different perspectives, look at additional considerations, different ways that all of that information could be kind of crafted and considered, give that feedback back to the work-study committee. And this sort of volleying of ideas went back and forth throughout the course of the school year. And again, there's also in your final report, a list of who those folks are. And we wanted to, as we were putting together the participants in there, we wanted to make sure that we had had a majority of parents and students and community members serve on there. So, the graphic shows you that, too. And actually, a lot of these folks are here tonight. So, both from the work-study and the advisory council, we invited them to come here so that the Board could recognize them for this year's worth of work. So, I'm gonna ask if they're here, if they would stand. And as happens often, the students in the group would repeatedly steal the show in the, yes, so, my life's worked from now on to only attend meetings where there are students, students present, so. So, this, we included this information because it really did become an important, just guiding ideas for us, these parameters around the work. If you can imagine with that many people, you really have to have some shared agreements before you start digging into information. Also, because we wanted the people facilitating the meeting to truly be facilitators and not to be, we didn't want to just bring forward already crafted ideas. So, we thought that setting these parameters really allowed the membership of the group to be the thinkers and the workers around this. So, the things we did here, we reviewed, of course, the charge from the Board and the guiding principles that you offered us, both around class rank and then around the GPA, weighted GPA idea. Then we spent quite a bit of time going back and forth developing our philosophy statements. We wanted to make sure that even though these two groups weren't meeting each other necessarily during all this time, that they had shared understandings, that one group wasn't moving forward with a belief system that wasn't completely congruent with the other group's belief system. So, this took some negotiation of ideas and language, and ultimately, they created a list of guiding philosophy statements that all membership of both groups agreed on. And so, we've included those in your final report as a live link that you can reference if you'd like to see that. So, also, we studied the characteristics of a strong policy. We didn't go into this work with that idea as a parameter, but that surfaced through some of the conversations with the consultant that we had, and he will actually share some of those characteristics with you. And then, the same way that we did this with the class rank committee, which proved to be a meaningful process, we surfaced every applicable question that we could. We didn't, nothing was off the table. Any question that surfaced, we included it, and then really committed to making sure that we found out, found all the information to those questions, so. And then also, in your final report on pages 19 and 20, there's a more comprehensive look at the committee meetings and the agenda items on those meetings. We've embedded some live links there when we would reference a particular document that we used so that you could refer to that also. But, in summary, the committee meetings went through this list of work that we did. We studied everything that we sought out to study, and then some, did some summaries of policies, surfaced a variety of options. Ultimately, we landed on about eight options that seemed reasonable or realistic for our school district and brought those forward for consideration, spent some time working around those. We, once some recommendations had been crafted, we brought those out to our community on communication tours at several schools that represented the, across the district. And then, every question or comment that was surfaced from community tours, either through the mechanism we provided with a link where they could provide us information or through email, recrafted those as additional items to consider, and then brought all of that one final time back to these committees. And in fact, that last time we brought the two committees together, it felt like they were two people on a blind date that we had set up or something where we were like, work, work task force, meet the committee that you've been, you know, having these secret conversations with behind the scenes all these years, or this year. So, and then together as a combined group, they considered all of these final recommendations one more time. We really put everything back on the table one more time and just said before we move this forward, we just really want to feel like there's a strong sense of consensus among everyone there, so. And then, also, just from those committee meetings, anything that surfaced as a question that wasn't necessarily tied to a particular recommendation, we went ahead and crafted an FAQ document around that and included that also, and that's also on page 24 of your final report. So, there were related questions, tangential questions, that we didn't want to just, we didn't want anyone to think we were overlooking any items, even if they weren't explicitly connected to that, so. And I'm going to go ahead and turn a bit of the presentation over to the consultant that we intersected with along this journey. Just through some conversations with other districts, we became aware that here in the metroplex, Dr. Todd Kettler had grown, he tells the funny story about how unintentional it was to grow as an expert in this particular policy, but it happened nonetheless, and we found out about it. And so, we invited him as a neutral, unbiased participant to come in, answer some questions from the committees, and bring some additional information. So, Dr. Kettler's here tonight, and he's gonna share some of this information with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you hear me? First, I want to publicly just say that it's an honor to work with the Plano Independent School District. As an administrator and a professor in a college of education, I've admired the work you do for years. I spend my days studying advanced academic achievement in school districts all across Texas as well as beyond Texas, and I can assure you that Plano ISD has a reputation of one of the finest school districts in the state by all of those who study it. I'm gonna talk just a little bit about these three points, principles of a good policy, frame of reference problem, and then a brief simulation that I like to do with audiences as we talk about what is rank and how does rank function in this process of students transitioning beyond the school district. But, just like Lisa said, I think of myself as an accidental expert in this. I always imagined that I did something to the displeasure of a superintendent a number of years ago, and then in return, he said, "You're gonna be in charge of revising the GPA policy." But, I have studied it more than average, I'm afraid. But, one of the things I'd talk about to begin with, and what are the principles that make a good policy, particularly in relation to GPA and class rank? And I identified over time, three principles that the policy is first of all distributed, meaning that a good policy for GPA and rank, EIC local, should be distributed in the sense that it works and functions well for the entirety of the class. In other words, I've seen school districts that have a policy that works really well for the top 10%, maybe the top quartile. I've seen policies that might work well for the middle of the class or the bottom of the class, but in all honesty, a school district is here for 100% of the students. So, a good policy in this regard is distributed, meaning that we want to ask the question, is this policy going to function well with the entirety of any graduating class? The second principle of a good policy related to rank and GPA is fairness. And while we always want to assume that we do everything with fairness, sometimes we have unintentional incidents which make us question whether something is fair. Like, if you can imagine, I worked with a district a number of years ago where you could have taken two students that would go through high school, and they make the exact same grades in all of their core courses. And in fact, they make the exact grades in their elective courses. But, the difference is, the elective courses taken by student A were in choir, and she took honors choir several years, and the other student, student B, took electives in the career technology area, particularly in accounting. And those courses were not weighted, but because they, and they made the exact same grade in every class they took. But which ones, which of those students gets ranked higher at the end of the day? The student who chose choir versus the student who chose accounting? And I would ask any educational entity, is that seem fair? That one student's elective choice gave that student, because of the weighted credit, a slight advantage? So, one of the things we look for in a good GPA ranking policy is, is it fair? Do all students, regardless of their choice of elective courses, have equal opportunity to compete for the top 10% valedictorian, salutatorian, and so forth? And the third principle of a good policy is simplicity. Simplicity in policy don't often appear in the sentence, the same sentence, but one of the things that I've noticed in my work with school districts over time is occasionally we have what we call the test child, where a family will send their first kid to high school and not know much about how it works, and then they realize after the fact, well, this is the thing, these are the things you should do if you want to be in the top 10%. But, that's fine, you are a test child, we'll know better on our next child. And I don't know that that's how the district wants to set up its policy. I think ideally, you want to create a policy that's simple enough for any family in the district to read through the policy and understand, wow, this is, this is how it works, this will guide how I make my decisions in course selection and so forth. So, and I, these three principles were important when I started working with the committee, and these have been important in my work with GPA, EIC, local policies for a number of years. So, I think that these were foremost in the conversations we had when I joined the committee. I'm gonna give you a brief example of what I call the frame of reference problem. If you'll just allow me to use a narrative for a moment, I think narratives sometimes capture these better than others. But, my wife is a competitive snow skier, and in fact, she just competed in the Olympics in South Korea. She didn't do very well. She, in her event, she got 35th out of 40. But I was, nonetheless, the kids and I were very proud of her. So, but I've, and I've got a friend who lives in northern Virginia, and he's, he works at a ski mountain, he's a ski patrol, but he also organizes some fundraisers, and some of their fundraisers involve skiing. So, they do these skiing fundraisers where you, it's similar to like having a golf fundraiser. We've all been on those, where you get a team of four, you pay your money, and you raise money. Anyway, so, he's putting together some, a team, and he said, "Todd, you know, I know your wife's a competitive skier, we were thinking about maybe having her come up on our team for this fundraiser." And I said, "Well, I mean, it makes sense, I mean, you're right, she's a pretty competitive skier." And he says, "Well, how, how good is she? Like, could you be specific?" I said, "Well," I said, "you know, in all honesty, Ryan, the, she's 35th out of 40." And said, "She's bottom 20%." And he said, "Oh, well, I think we're looking for something a little better than that." So, he moves on and asks some other friends of ours to be on that fundraising snow skiing team because my wife didn't qualify, apparently. What I didn't tell him was, she was 35th out of 40 in the Olympics, right? Because the Olympics are not your normal competition, right? Those are the best people in the world. And while that story has a lot of fictions in it, my wife's not actually a skier, the moral of the story is accurate, and that is, frame of reference matters, and when we only use rank order to describe the merit of someone's abilities or performance, the frame of reference really matters. So, when we use rank order in a highly competitive school district, it sometimes puts students at a disadvantage because, similar to snow skiing in the Olympics, in a highly competitive environment, competing academically in one of the most successful advanced academic school districts, is also, has a potential disadvantage if you rank order students and use that as a metric. In fact, whenever I talk about college admissions and what should be important, I would suggest that rank order of the students is one of the least effective metrics that we could use. In fact, if you look at some of our most prestigious private schools, not only in the Dallas area but beyond Dallas, you realize that most private schools don't rank order their students because you don't go to a prestigious, highly competitive academic environment only to have the school stamp your transcript as bottom 20% when you walk out the door. And so, so I think when you look at frame of reference, you'll see that a lot of folks have already acknowledged it. And I think you see, even in our area, some of the higher achieving school districts across Texas and particularly in North Texas have already done away with class rank because they understand the frame of reference problem. This is a little simulation that I like to do. If you see on your chart there, I gave you five students' data. It's fairly abbreviated, but I want you to imagine, and when I give the simulation, we're gonna go through it pretty quickly here, but when I'm working with a group, and I've done this presentation with some of the district groups as I went around on the tours, I always tell the group that, imagine, we've admitted the people that clearly qualified, and we've eliminated the people that don't qualify. So, we're down to the final three seats in our freshman class. And these are the five students that we've narrowed it down to, and we've got to decide which three of these five are going to be admitted and which two are going to be eliminated. So, you've got this data up there, GPA, ACT composite score, and then the college credit courses that they, students have taken, you know, how many advanced courses did you take during your high school career? And the GPA here has been converted to a typical 4.0 scale, which is, you know, a four, an A gets a four, a three gets a B, and that's how most colleges do it because GPA scales across most school districts are really varied. You've got five point, you've got four point, you've got six point, somebody in our metroplex has a 12 point. Some people still use numerical averages, so when it comes down to admissions, colleges want to compare apples to apples, so they usually do their own conversion. Moreover, when they make those conversions, a lot of times they leave out the elective courses. They don't really care how well you did in PE or band or debate, what they want to look is how you did in your core academics, because oftentimes, grades in elective courses are given, you know, there's some grade inflation in elective, some electives. And then the ACT, you see the ACT score there. In Texas, the ACT average has just crept up to 20, it was just below 20 for a number of years, we're right around 20 now. So, you can see that most of these kids were slightly above average, and then you can see that that's the actual number of college, like AP or IB or honors courses they would have taken or dual credit. So, I didn't want to do the simulation, I had the group decide which two to eliminate. And every time we did, I mean, everywhere we went, the same two get eliminated. And if you've been studying the chart while I'm talking, you could probably guess which two they are. Student number one and student number five get eliminated. When I ask the group, usually they'll say, "Well, you know, their GPA is a little bit lower, that 20 ACT is the lowest in the group, that student only took one college credit course, and, you know, student number five only took two college credit courses." So, it seems fairly easy to eliminate those two, because everybody picks one and five. And then I, I said, "Well, there's one last piece of data that I'm gonna add in here," and this is the class rank of the students. You can see there, so student number one is in the top 5% of her graduating class. Oddly enough, student number three is in the bottom half of her graduating class, even with a 3.95, a really high ACT, and a really pretty impressive number of college credit courses. And sometimes you may ask, "Well, how does that happen? How do you have those kind of metrics yet be in the bottom half of your class?" And I said, "Well, for instance, you attend a really competitive high school." I think when you, when you look at who's in the top 10%, most often, they have, like, let's just say if you're using an old numerical scale, you would find in the top 10%, you know, most kids that are in the top 10% have above a 100 average. And in fact, I, I know that's why the weighted GPA becomes pretty critical, but student number five could have easily attended a school, a high school like Plano ISD, or could have attended a number of other high schools in our area, could have attended a prestigious magnet school. But in this case, student number three, I'm sorry, I think I said five a moment ago, student number three who's in the bottom half would possibly have been eliminated because most colleges will not even look at transcripts or applications if they're in the bottom quartile, and some if they're in the bottom half. So, when, and I know part of the data gathering in the district is about 90% of Plano ISD graduates seek post-secondary education. So, you might wonder, like, is it, does that matter, the class rank? So, in the simulation, I always asked the group, I said, "All right, you've made your decisions, you've decided who you're gonna eliminate, now that I've added class rank, I ask the group to consider, would you change your mind?" And for the most part, we'll have one or two that say, "I might change my mind," but I would estimate that 95 to 97% of the people that participate in the simulation say, "No, I did not change my mind" after you added in class rank. And then one of the things that I would conclude is because of our frame of reference problem, class rank in this case demonstrates that it's a really poor metric of how you would make a admission decision. Like, I look at student one there, and I imagine student one might have attended a small rural school that may have only had two AP course options, but, you know, she took one of the two. She's in the top 5% of her class, but you know what? The class wasn't as competitive. It wasn't like attending Plano Senior High or Plano East or Plano West. So, anyway, one of the things we learned from the simulation is it kind of validates that class rank is not necessarily the strongest metric. So, just some additional findings, and this is sort of my concluding point here, is students from high performing schools who are ranked in class are at somewhat of a disadvantage when considered against other students from high performing schools that don't rank. Or maybe they're even at a disadvantage from, when they're compared to high students at average performing or even low performing schools that get in with high class rank metrics. So, one of the things you may be asking is, "Well, we, we think Plano ISD is the best school district in town, so we think really highly of it, but what about somebody from the outside?" One of the things, I have a research team where we studied, like I mentioned, advanced academics. And so, we've actually created an indicator called the Advanced Academics Index where we can rank order, not, I know I said rank order is not great for ranking students, but, you know, it's pretty fun for ranking districts. So, we've actually ranked ordered all 1,029 school districts in Texas, and Plano's in the top 1%. So, I think when you, if you want to ask yourself, well, are we a highly competitive district that would suffer under the frame of reference problem? I can tell you that mathematically, I've checked that, and I can tell you, you are. I would suggest that your students possibly are hindered when you report class rank, particularly when you get below the top 25% for instance. Local school districts that do not rank, because we asked, I know I've asked around, I've been in those districts as well, they have reported that once they quit ranking, they felt like they had better success for students getting into tough-to-get-in new schools like Texas and A&amp;M. I mean, you know that these state schools, if you're not in the top 10%, or I guess Texas is gonna be top 6% for the current junior class, if you're not in that automatic admission category, those are tough admissions to earn. So, one of the things that we found from some of these schools that quit ranking, you know, and I know you know who the schools in the area are, but they report that they believe they've had more students admitted to those highly competitive state schools when they were no longer putting their rank on the transcript, and the students would earn admission on the merits of things like GPA, ACT, SAT, those sorts of, you know, number of college credit courses they've taken as well. So, what, what, we may wonder, and you may wonder, what happens in the absence of class rank? What hap, what, how does a college handle that? I don't work in admissions, so I'm not gonna speak as an admission counselor, but if I did speak as an admission counselor, I wouldn't tell you anything because they never tell anything. It's like, it's like one of the biggest secrets in the country, when they go into that room, they close the door, and they decide who gets in and who doesn't. But some of the, some of the information that we have gotten, or I have gotten, over the number of years of asking these questions, is when, when a student doesn't have a class rank, they often treat that as a missing data point, if they care, if they care about class rank. Like, but some people do, I've found, like, there's a school down at College Station that tends to, and I said, "Well, what do you do if a student applies? You get 40,000 applicants for your freshman class, how do you make sense of the kid that doesn't have a class rank?" And they said, "Well, we get them all the time. First of all, you know, private school kids apply here, they don't have class rank. Kids from Island Park, kids from Copel, kids from Carroll, kids from Spring Branch, kids from Lake Travis High School, kids from Enz ISD, they apply here, they don't have class rank. What do you do?" And he says, "Well, if we need to know, we have this formula of calculating missing data, and if anyone's a statistician, you might understand." And if anyone's a statistician, you might understand multiple imputation or use multiple variables, and you can estimate by comparing the variables of one student to the entire dataset of 40,000 students. Say, if we were going to compare this student to all the others who have similar data, what type of class rank would we estimate this student has? So if I could, I'll go back to that chart and say, for instance, if you looked at student three, when rank wasn't reported, you might say, wow, if student one was in the top 5%, student three must be really impressive because that student didn't report a rank. So when we're going to estimate where that student would be, they tend to overestimate. And you can actually mathematically prove that, I wouldn't, I'm not going to bore you with that, but if the district is above average, the estimation of where they would be in class rank is going to be inflated. And if you're in the top 1%, the estimation of class rank would definitely be inflated. So if, in my experience of working with school districts of similar high performance, they usually understand that because of frame of reference, it doesn't always make sense to rank. I'll add in a couple of other things that I think I contributed perhaps to the discussion, is if we go back to these three principles for a moment, what does a policy look like that serves the entire range of the class? I suggested when I first started working with the group that if you, when you rank every student, you're not doing, you're not doing a benefit to the kids below the midpoint. So when those students walk out of here, and because 90% are entering post-secondary education somewhere, that is a tremendous hindrance. In fact, it's possibly a hindrance for everybody below the top quartile. So if you want a policy that's distributed, I highly recommend you think, wow, are we serving the entire class? Rank is not necessarily helpful to the entire class. And then on the fairness, I know we talked about, and these are some of the things that are going to come up momentarily, is how could you create a GPA system that identifies the top 10%, the valedictorian and salutatorian in a way that maximizes fairness? So I know that was a really important part of our conversation. And then finally, just simplicity, I think a lot of that is going to go back into how do we present this to the, to the families in the district? How do we present this to the administrators and the teachers and the counselors so that everybody can clearly understand what a policy change would entail? And like I said, I'll be happy to answer questions, but it's a privilege to work with this team and to work with the district.
I have a question. On the, that advanced academics that you talked about where it ranks districts?
Yes.
Do colleges use that data?
They don't use the data that I've calculated. They possibly have their own data in terms of the admission offices. The way we use it in our research team at the University of North Texas is only as an independent variable. So for instance, we want to know if districts that are high, have high academic cultures vary in other ways. So that's how we primarily used it there. The fact that I can sort of have a rank ordered list of everybody in the state is just a side effect of that research, but they don't necessarily have it. But what I do know is most of them have a, what I would call an unofficial understanding of who the most competitive districts are in the state, and every student that graduates has a high school profile that accompanies their transcript that describes the quality of the high school.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Todd. We're going to move at this point into our recommendations. And I'll start out sharing that we are bringing forward, as a starting point, continuing with our cumulative GPA and then also introducing a subset of that that would be used solely for calculating the top 10%. And I'm going to go into some detail on what each of those mean and then share with you immediately following that, why the committee felt it was important to include both of these measures. So I'll start out with the cumulative GPA, and this is really the one that we're all familiar with. It's the all-inclusive GPA that students currently receive. It's determined by adding the total number of grade points that they earn for high school credit courses divided by the number of credit hours attempted. This GPA does and will continue to be the GPA that is published on transcripts that students will include in college applications. It is simple to calculate and will, we will continue to be very transparent with students and parents about how they can calculate GPA, although they will get that each time a report card is issued. One thing I would share though, in addition, that this, that our committee, while this cumulative GPA is not new, through some of the work that we've done, we've determined that really we can do, we being Plano ISD, can do a better job by communicating with parents and students as they enter academic planning, conversations with counselors, how to best set goals for themselves so that students are able to really take the most appropriate, most challenging courses for their particular needs and interests so that students have an understanding that they have control over their GPA, their GPA is solely determined by how well they perform, not how well they perform in comparison to someone else that they don't have control over. And then additionally, continuing to help students who are interested know how to calculate their cumulative GPA and value in doing so. And our committees talked multiple times about our students will, if they don't already, will have an app available for students to do this, we're sure. And then continuing with the thinking behind continuing our cumulative GPA, this also will allow families to continue to determine and to apply their own standards of excellence and expectations for their, their children and what they expect. In addition to what we currently have in our cumulative GPA, we are also recommending that we implement a Latin system for recognizing students who would reach our district determined standard of excellence. So this would be similar to what colleges do, it's similar to what our Academy High School does, where students are able to graduate with a honors designation that is based on a standard. So we wouldn't determine that only 10% of our students can graduate magna cum laude, but any student that is able to achieve at the level that is set for that honors designation can earn that. And then I'd move into, for purposes of discussion tonight, what I'm going to call our ranking GPA, but really, this is simply calculating rank, which, you know, we are, continue to be required by the state to calculate rank for our top 10%. This is really a kind of a behind the scenes calculation that is simply based on a subset of courses from the cumulative GPA. So this is not a GPA that would appear anywhere, it would not be set to colleges, it would simply be used as a means of calculating the top 10%. And for this calculation, we would use, we would calculate the same way we do cumulative GPA, except that we would designate certain high school courses that would, if a student takes that course, it would count toward their ranking GPA. Again, this, this is not something that would be shared externally, but instead used as an internal measure solely for this purpose, although we would be very transparent in sharing with students and parents how this GPA would be calculated. We had a lot of discussion about what courses are best to include in a ranking GPA. And while we examined multiple options, the committees concluded in recommending that really every option we studied other than this one was arbitrary. And so we chose to determine that the courses that would be counted in this ranking calculation would be courses in math, science, social studies, and English that the state has already identified as counting toward a graduation requirement. So we won't pick and choose what courses in math count, but we would count any course that the state says that course can count as a math requirement for purposes of graduation.
So Susan, can I ask you a question about that? So if a student were to take math for an elective, that would not count in the calculation? Is that correct?
No, it, the, the list of courses, and I have a draft, but the list of courses will be published. So in the course catalog, in our local exhibit, we would designate any course that the state has determined could count toward a math requirement graduate, for graduation. They may take four of those, or they may take, there might be seven of them and they choose to take all seven. If they take it, it would count. And I'll get to that in just a minute. So we will, for the vast majority of our students, they will have a minimum of 16 courses that will be used in this calculation for a math, science, English, and social studies. Beyond that, students will choose, do I, so I've taken 16 courses now, I know what my current ranking GPA is, I may choose to take additional highly weighted courses in an effort to boost my GPA, or I may choose not to because really, every time I take a course, I'm, I'm impacting my ranking GPA, but I could impact it up or down depending on how well I do. So the thinking behind this is it allows students, once they've completed their ranking GPA, to really sit back and say, now what courses do I want to take? And it also doesn't encourage students to load up on advanced level coursework simply for the purpose of bumping their ranking GPA. And Todd shares a wonderful example. Todd, I don't know if you want to share that quickly, it's very similar to a batting average, a perfect batting average, that a batter gets up. Pitcher, pitcher, not.
I'm a baseball fan, but the, the example we shared is if a, if you know baseball, achieving an end of year batting average of 400 is a remarkable achievement and it's rarely been done. So you can imagine a baseball player getting to the final game of the season and he has his second at bat of the game and he gets a hit and his average bumps up to 400 on the nose. And now he has to look at the manager and say, perhaps you should pinch hit for me next time because taking one more at bat, I could make an out and then I fall back below 400. And I think GPA is the same way. When you, when you achieve a high GPA, every time you take another course, it could be fluctuating either way. Historically, one of the reasons kids would keep adding AP courses is they would get punished if they take courses in elective areas that weren't weighted. So they would fill their schedule with AP courses. The proposal that Susan mentioned takes that pressure off if those classes are not going to count to their weighted GPA. So then they're just deciding, you know, would I take an AP course, try to raise it a little bit, but at the same time I could reduce.
So I want to spend just a little bit of time talking about why make a change? Why would we have both of these calculations occurring? And really what's driving this is the idea of fairness for all of our students in creating a system that doesn't just work for our very top achieving students, but not well for our students who are below the top 10% and vice versa. So the first point that I'd make is when we use a ranking GPA, it does just what Dr. Kettler mentioned. Students are not discouraged then from taking unweighted elective courses in their area of interest. So our current system, if a student takes who has a very high ranking GPA, so that typically means their cumulative GPA is already above a 4.0. When they take a non-weighted course, a course that's weighted at a 4.0, even if they make a 100 in that course, it basically has a negative effect on their cumulative GPA. So trying to remove that part of thinking behind course selection is one of the reasons that we felt strongly about the ranking GPA. The second point is when we use a ranking GPA, it increases fairness for students who are seeking to be in the top 10% by eliminating those equity issues that Todd referred to earlier. So we have currently some elective courses that are weighted, and that's really based on our historical practice. As the graduation plan has changed and more and more CTE courses have been developed, none of those, very few of those courses receive a weighting. Additionally, we have some courses that just because College Board has determined they will offer AP art or art history, there are some elective pathways that students who choose to take that, that particular pathway really have an advantage over students who choose a different pathway. That might be athletics, it might be a CTE course. So we feel that the ranking GPA using only these core courses really creates more fair landscape for measuring and ranking students' academic achievement. The next point is when we talk about what an excellent option it is to use a ranking GPA, that's true for students who are in the top of their class and particularly students that have a GPA weighted greater than a 4.0. However, we have really the majority of our graduating class still benefits from including non-weighted elective coursework in their cumulative GPA. So we really feel strongly that we don't want to only have a ranking GPA, we want all students to be able to have, to be able to see a cumulative GPA which is reflective of all of the coursework that they took. And then the last point, while I would say our committee certainly struggled with how much stress, and we heard this so strongly from our student voice, how much stress is inherent in our current ranking and GPA system, we recognize we can't commit, we can't eliminate stress completely by changing policy, but we really do believe that students who are in the top portion of their class right now are mathematically discouraged from taking non-weighted GPA courses. And we hear example after example of students saying, you know, I, I'm up all night because I'm taking six AP courses, not because I'm interested, but because I need to be in the top 10% and that's the only way I know how to do that. So we feel that maintaining both of these calculations helps our top-end student perhaps reduce the stress that they currently feel in continuing to take the maximum number of highly weighted courses that are available.
Susan, can I ask a quick question?
Of course.
Where did we land on the credit by exam?
I'm going to get to that.
Okay.
Yeah. Do you mind if I wait, Nancy?
Absolutely.
It's one of the things that we considered, but recommended no change, so that's included. So the question comes up again, you know, well, why not rank all students? And I would share that both, really all three committees, the 2015 original committee and then the 2017 committees, really studied all aspects related to class rank and ultimately felt very strongly that in a district like ours- to class rank, and ultimately felt very strongly that in a district like ours, that we are doing greater harm than benefit in continuing to rank students beyond what we're required to. Additionally, I would share that we, the, the other question that often comes up is, but we need to rank for this purpose. We need to rank because students who are going to apply for TAMS need to know their rank, or A&amp;M has a scholarship that's available if you have a certain SAT or ACT score, and you're in the top twenty-five percent, there's automatic admission. We, we followed up on every example that was brought to us, and not one, not one example did we find where the entity said, yeah, if you don't have rank, we can't do it. Every time, they said either, doesn't matter to us, we'll use other data points, or what Dr. Kettler shared, which is, we will calculate based on what we, what, what our, what our statistical measures are, and in those cases, for districts like Plano, students will be ranked higher on an estimate than their actual rank would be.
Susan, just to ask a clarifying question on that, because I'm a little familiar with A&amp;M's policy, the, the top twenty-five percent and whatever the ACT score is, and so, those kids are auto-admit just like top ten percent. In this scenario, is the assumption they're not auto-admit, but they end up getting in? Or do they actually admit them during the auto-admit time?
They actually admit them, and, and Jana followed up again this year with A&amp;M and asked that exact question. A year ago, what, what they told us was, they, they're automatically admitted, but there's a slight lag time. They, they might be two weeks beyond, behind what the automatic admission was. When we called this year, they said, it, it's done exactly the same time as all students, we just will estimate their rank.
Interesting, because I had a friend whose kids went, sons went to Jesuit, and so, they don't rank there, so they weren't auto-admitted, and so it was a much longer process. I guess I have to take comfort that you did that due diligence. It makes the most difference at A&amp;M in terms of dorms, because you get in early, there's a lovely, fairly new dorm. You get in not so early, not so lovely.
I lived in an old dorm, and it was lovely.
My husband lived in one without air conditioning. Well, my daughter lived in one that was still there when I was a student, and so my son, he was fortunate, he was in the new dorm. It was like an upscale hotel.
The next recommendation that we're bringing forward is that we will, we will comply with the state law, I know you're relieved to hear that, and, and rank our, our top ten percent. And this slide really has information on that we just discussed, which is, did we find any reason to rank beyond the top ten percent? I will share the committees had extensive discussion on this, but, both because beyond the top ten percent becomes very arbitrary, and also because we did not find evidence of any case that students needed a rank beyond what we're required to do. We, we maintain that recommendation. A change that we've made since our recommendation from last year is, we, we will notify students at the appropriate times that rank is calculated, that they are in the top ten percent, but we will not give them their rank at that time. However, our change is, if students wish to know, in their notification, it will say, you are in the top ten percent. If you desire to know what your exact rank is, you may do so by contacting the registrar or whatever that process is. We felt that this really meets the, the needs of families who wish to know, as well as families who, it may not be beneficial for them. An example of that may be a student who is applying to a highly competitive, I'll use an Ivy League example. For them to be ranked in the top ten percent, but perhaps be in the ninth percent in Plano ISD, it really might be more advantageous for that student to say, I don't want to disclose my rank to this university, so I will only disclose I'm in the top ten percent. But, we're, we're going to leave that choice to individual students and families. If they wish to know, they will, they'll be able to know that.
Of course, if the university asks them, can you find it out? Their answer has to be yes.
They can either, the, the, the university won't. On the application, it will either say, are you, are you disclosing rank or not? So they can, if they haven't gotten their rank, they can say, I'm not disclosing it.
So how would this work with UT, which has a lower than six, or whatever, six or seven percent now?
So, my guess would be, and I could, I would only say, if a student is applying to UT for auto-admission, and they're ranked in the top six percent, they probably, for UT, want to disclose that.
Yeah, so that, so, but it's incumbent upon the student then to do, to, to take that step?
Right, but it's going to be incumbent upon each student, because the students are who make application. So the stu, each student will determine, am I disclosing rank or not?
Per university, or?
Should you disclose it by university?
Yes.
So that's different than saying you know or don't know. You're disclosing or not disclosing.
Right.
Hopefully you won't have a thousand kids come ask you all on the same day, but we need to think about how that process may need to be automated. In general, our councils are already overwhelmed, and that process is very archaic.
For sure, we will look at that. And, and as with several things that you'll see, another reason why we are recommending this not go into effect until 2019, because we really need a year to do that kind of work, Tammy. I mean, there's, there's multiple things that we need to work out in a efficient system.
So then in 2019, it would take, impact for the eighth graders there?
Yes.
No one in mid-process would be changed?
Yes. No, no, for the incoming class of 2019. So that the, this year's current seventh graders, who will be ninth graders, entering ninth grade.
I guess it would be also important to have the students understand the advantages of disclosing or checking the box non-disclosure. Will we have that kind of?
Yes, that'll, and, and again, part of what we need time to develop is, this will in many ways, impact what our four-year conferences look like and what our academic planning. Just like I talked about in the beginning, part of what our message will be changes when we talk about impacting your own GPA as compared to having to have a measure against someone else. The same will be true for helping students understand as they begin to approach, maybe not in their eighth grade conference, because it still seems a long ways away, but certainly at their ninth grade conference, that will be part of helping students and parents understand that, how it may or may not be beneficial.
Okay, because I went through a lot of those comments from the students and the parents, and there was a significant minority that didn't even understand what class rank was.
Yeah.
Like thirty-seven percent. So, it's an education process.
Yeah. And, and really, and Dr. Kettler has shared this, for students who are not in the top ten percent, and certainly for students who are not near that, class rank has little meaning, and really probably doesn't need to. It, it, their overall transcript and what that demonstrates to colleges in doing their very best, that, that has meaning to a hundred percent of our students.
Well, the top ten percent, or the six or seven percent that David's referring to, is a compliance process.
Actually, the ten percent is compliance. Six percent is a waiver that UT is getting to assure that they get seventy-five percent of their students are local.
Yeah.
So it doesn't have to be. We are not obligated to disclose six percent. Austin has a special waiver.
Yeah. Okay.
The next recommendation that the committee is bringing forward is, as we notify our top ten percent, our recommendation is that we begin that when students converge at their respective senior highs. The idea of ranking is really ranking within their graduating class, and ranking at ninth grade and tenth grade is inaccurate and, and a little bit misleading, because they are being ranked with part of their graduating class, but not their whole graduating class. So our recommendation would be, we begin to officially rank students when they begin their eleventh grade year. The next part of this, I'm going to say is a great example of Lisa referred to, we took back, once we had conducted our communication tours, we compiled the information, we looked at trends, and then took back to our committees, our combined committees, all of the recommendations, as well as the feedback that was trend, that, that had more than just an isolated, if there were three or four, we combined that and took it back. And one of the things that came forward, in that the committee actually made a different decision that night, was, we had originally said we would rank, and that would happen after first semester was completed of their junior year. As the committee talked about that a little bit more, and began to realize that actually families beginning in eleventh grade are beginning to do college visits, and really need that information sooner than February. So we made a change in that and recommend that we rank early in the fall semester, just as soon as new students who are entering the class. So we don't want to do it in, necessarily in August. We want enough time to capture new students to that graduating class. But, we will give rank out early in the fall of their junior year, then again in February, which would include their junior first semester, and then again in June, which would include their second semester of their junior year. I'm going to share one other thing that, that will help families who perhaps want to have an idea before their junior year, although this, this is a little bit misleading in trying to even calculate this, but something else that we, we did listen to feedback, we're also going to publish what I'm calling the bottom bracket of the top ten percent. So, when we calculate class rank at each of the senior highs, each time we do that, we will publish on their website, here's what the bottom, the lowest, the, I never say this right, the lowest GPA in the top ten percent. This is what that ranking GPA was. So a student who was not notified they were in the top ten percent, but wants to know, how close am I to that? Do I have, if I work really hard next semester, or the next two semesters, am I in the ballpark of making it into the top ten percent? That at least gives them some means of comparison, so they have a way to, if that's important to them, to determine if they're close to the top ten percent. The last evalu, the, the last recommendation that we're bringing forward is, again, part of the reason we have a lot of work ahead of us, assuming you determine to take some action in June. We also feel strongly that part of what came out of our study was recognizing that our current structure has some arbitrariness in it. It has some historical course weighting that really, when we go back and say, why is this course weighted and not this course, we don't have a good answer for it. And so, our recommendation will be to create an objective evaluation tool that will identify characteristics of courses that would receive honors or advanced weighting. And then, we would reevaluate all courses that, that are brought forward next year. So that will include current courses that have, and, and a lot of this is in that four point five, the honors column. Evaluate those courses, as well as many new courses that have been developed that possibly should be receiving some weighted grade point. It will, this will also be where we review whether dual credit continues to be weighted at a four point five, or whether those courses, as they come forward, should be weighted at a five point oh, like our AP and IB. But all of that will be examined in this evaluation tool that will be developed. Then to Nancy's question, these are elements that we studied and reviewed, but ultimately made a recommendation that no change occur. And that would be, we would continue to designate valedictorian and salutatorian as the two students with the highest ranking GPA. The alternative methods for obtaining credit, and so that would include credit by exam, e-school, correspondence. Those courses will continue to be excluded from GPA calculations, and that high school courses taken prior to ninth grade will be counted, as they are now, in the GPA calculations.
Susan, I have a question in that regard. I have a question, it's going to be a little hard to articulate, but in looking at the ranking GPA, and you have basically what used to be the four by four, the four main content areas, I think there's already some mom out there who's figuring out how to get the most AP classes, the more, the most credit by exam, to hop through, what, what age does junior need to take?
Yeah.
Algebra. And so I think we really need to look hard at that, because if we're going to have a system like that, then everybody needs the roadmap. And so we need to understand which of these classes can be bypassed. Now, English is probably a good one, you really can't. You've got two honors, two AP, that's the only way to do it. Math opens up all sorts of different possibilities. And what's connected to that is when kids can take advanced math. Depending upon your, your nine, ten school, you may not have that option without transferring or taking a bus to another school. That creates a real uneven playing field. And how we identify kids early on, in terms of how we're going to put them forward in math. If you're not at the right school, or sometimes if you don't look the right way, you don't get considered for that sort of hopping. So we've had some ancillary work that we're going to have to do to make sure this doesn't become just one more game.
Yeah, I appreciate your comment, Tammy, and I, I will share, we spent a lot of time talking about that, and, and a lot of time trying to create a system where that kind of gamesmanship couldn't occur, and ultimately, I, I would say we kind of came to peace with, we're not going to, unless we're willing to say, we are not going to have any weighted GPA at all, and go to a, a very flat system like our academy, there is going to be some gamesmanship. And so, our part in that will be to be sure that we are transparent with parents, that they understand if it's appropriate for their child, or desired for their child to take credit by exam, that, that information is readily available. I mean, we are, we are very committed to trying to reduce that to the extent that we can.
And so I think, I appreciate that, and I think just the, the part we need to be mindful of is, we're going to have to be much more careful that we have the same course offerings at all of our nine, ten schools, so kids don't have to get on a bus to take calculus when they're in the tenth grade, because they're at Shepton, being told they have to go to Vines to get that. And to make sure that we give all kids a shot early in their grades, whether it's fourth grade or fifth grade, to identify them as math fast trackers. Yeah, I speak from a little personal experience. My son had the score, but we were at the wrong school to be considered for that, so he was never in Math Rocks, just because of the school he attended, not because of his score. And we can't let that happen.
Thank you.
Susan, thank you so much. There's an incredible amount of work in this and thought, and it's greatly appreciated. I had some questions, though.
Can I just say, we have, I wasn't quite done, and we have, I'd love for you to hear, we have a parent and a student who would like to speak just on behalf of representing the committee. Do you mind, Jerry?
No, of course not.
And then we're ready to take, all of us are ready to take questions. But, I, I, we are so appreciative of the voice that all of the participants in our committees brought forward, but nobody more so than our parents and students. And like Lisa said, at each of our advisory committee meetings, the room stopped as students spoke and spoke to us. And so I, I would like for two of our participants to just take a minute and share some of their thoughts. I'd invite Masai Rancleth. I'd invite Masai Rinkliff, who was one of our parents, to first come to the podium. And then after she speaks, Sipasami Dangodzi.
Did I do that well?
Sipo, as we know her, is also going to share a few comments, and then we will welcome any questions.
My name is Masai Rinkliff, I have three children. My oldest graduated from Plano West in 2013, then went on to earn a chemical engineering degree from Rice University. My son graduated from Plano West in 2016, and is now studying mechanical engineering at the United States Military Academy at West Point. My youngest is a junior at Plano West. Although any change in the GPA rank policy would not affect any of my children, I truly hope that PISD maintains its high academic standards and reputation. As a parent, my concerns about a change in the GPA and rank policy were, one, would it have helped my kids? And then, two, will it impact PISD's reputation with colleges? So first, would it have helped my kids? In terms of rank, all three of my kids had to choose between athletics, which is not weighted, and another academic course, which probably would have been weighted. All decided to participate in athletics. The proposed ranking GPA would have made the decision much easier and without any negative consequences. The proposed policy still allows those in the top 10% to know exactly where they stand, meaning what number they are. And it also allows those not in the top 10% to know how much they need to improve to get there. So I think these are all great features. So would it have helped my kids in terms of stress? Well, my youngest has stated that she wished the policy was in place for her. She says that it would definitely have reduced her stress level, in terms of dealing with ranking and all her peers' focus on GPA. So second, my concern was, would it impact PISD's reputation? Well, I think based on the information that Dr. Kettler shared with us, I don't think it will impact our reputation. As long as students continue to prepare for college, the colleges will see how well Plano students do. Since AP courses and honors level courses will still continue to be weighted, there should be no change in the number of challenging courses that our students take. Highly selective colleges will still get a rank and number, if they choose to include that, so nothing really significant will change there. So I would like to thank the administration to take input from parents and students, in addition to teachers, counselors, and administrators. I know I learned a lot from the students on the advisory council, and I don't know how the parents were selected, but based on my discussions with many of them, I feel like there was a wide range of backgrounds. The administration truly seemed to value our input and take it to the work-study committee. All aspects of the proposed policy change seem to have been considered. So I hope you will consider approving the policy change. And I really think the district should immediately implement only ranking the top 10%. Thank you.
My name is Sipasami Dangodzi, and I am a Plano Senior High School Avid student. This year, my principal, Sarah Watkins, asked me to join the Plano GPA Advisory Council group. And I am so glad I took up this opportunity, due to the fact that the people who will most likely be affected by this change in the way Plano ISD calculates GPA will be in the seventh grade, the same grade as my little sister. When the GPA advisory group started looking at possible ways the current system could be changed, I wanted to know what my peers would think. So I went around asking my friends, asking them what they thought of the current system and ways to change it. I made sure that I talked to people in differentiating spots on the ranking totem pole to eliminate outlier answers. What I found was that students who were in the top 10% felt like they were being punished for taking regular classes, because their rank would suffer. For example, my friend is a really, really good debater, and he is in the top 10%. And he wanted to take philosophy class to help him argue better by using philosophical arguments in public forum. His rank, however, fell because the class was a regular class. I noticed that my friends in the top 10% would not take the classes that they wanted to take, like art and fashion design, because they feared their GPA would falter. The friends who are not in the top 10%, however, would worry that because their GPA did not mention their rank, colleges would be less inclined to offer them a place in their university or scholarship. I remember a counselor here stating that she had a student who had an average GPA, but her rank was in a lower percentile, and she was freaking out and worried, because her rank would negatively affect her chances of getting into the college she wanted to get in. Ranking only the top 10% will benefit the remaining 90% of students when it comes to college applications and incentivizing students to take the classes they actually want to take, because their rank will not be negatively affected by taking, for example, regular art. This change will affect all students in PISD in what I believe will be a positive way. Another proposal done by the group, I believe, will also benefit the students, was waiting until the junior year to reveal the student's individual rank. Giving students a rank their freshman and sophomore year without including their sister's school will, in a way, set the students up for disappointment. By waiting until the fall of junior year to reveal the class rank, the students will have an accurate representation of where they stand amongst their peers. And waiting until the second semester will show how well, or how bad, said students did in their senior high. I would like to thank everyone who participated in the Plano GPA advisory, whether or not our suggestions will be implemented. I have learned a lot from listening to the perspectives of counselors, teachers, parents, and principals. I would also like to thank the board for listening to me talk today. I truly wish that this had been an option for me, but if my little sister can get this new system, I hope she will have a better high school experience. Thank you.
Thank you both very much, a parent and student, for sharing your perspectives. As I was sitting here, listening to the report by Lisa and Susan, I was thinking to myself, man, I'd really love to hear from some of the participants about their experience. So thank you for sharing that. Board members, do you want to ask some questions or make some comments at this time?
I have a few. You held three, what? You held three public hearings in middle schools recently. Did you get input there that made you make changes?
Just, the only, we did bring that input back, as I said, that's the input that I said we brought back and asked the committees. The only change that the committee determined that they wished to make was adding an earlier ranking period to the 11th grade year.
Okay. Why is e-schooling excluded?
The thinking behind that really is twofold. One is, we really believe, because that format is becoming more and more common for students when they get to college, that we desire that the majority of our students have that experience. And part of e-school, as we all know, is not just how well you perform, but how well you're able to manage your time. And as we see students who attempt that and struggle, we want that to be kind of penalty-free, that they have the opportunity to take the course and learn things about themselves that relate to time management and pacing, without the penalty of having that negatively impact their GPA.
So one possibility would be to give them the option, if they decide you want it included or not.
Yeah, there's, that, we had a lot of discussion about options, and that's almost impossible to do with a system as large as ours is. It basically means students on the front end need to determine if they want it to count or not, and then that needs to be coded differently for that set of students than it would for a student who determined they didn't want it to count. The other thing that I would say with that, that is often mentioned as a reason not to count, is unfortunately, we don't always know who's doing that work. Not that we do with homework either, but in a course like that, that's completely done outside the direct purview of a classroom, so that's another factor.
Okay. I hope in the future, we will have e-school classes at earlier, lower grades, and at that point, even if we make one of them mandatory, just so that you get exposed to it, then we can include them, so that would be an option. The next question I have is, we talked about the Latin recognition system. So the way you described it now, splitting the ranking GPA from the cumulative GPA, and the cumulative GPA is the one that applies towards the Latin recognition system, I would still hope that we can have some kind of recognition to those who decide to take, I remember when Dash presented to us, you know, the performance of kids who take not just one year of athletics or art or something, but they take two, three, four, five years, if there is a way to recognize those as well. It's a different type of recognition, but, you know, as students are looking for those kinds of recognitions, well, yes, I may go towards an academic recognition, I may just go to a recognition of my performance and achievements in art or athletics.
I guess at that point, we could determine where the cut point is going to be, and so if we want to look at a program where a kid does take athletics all four years, which are just regulars classes, what would an approximate GPA turn out to be? And we just need to make sure that we don't set the sumos so high that that child could never achieve it. I mean, have you decided how you're going to set the set points?
But I think, Yoram, if I understood you correctly, you're talking about in addition to the Latin system.
Yes.
Having something that would recognize students who kind of stuck with.
Worked with system.
Who were with a, who dedicated four years or whatever to a particular pathway.
There could be, just as a, to throw out an idea, you know, some kind of graduation recognition, you know?
Right.
A colored cord, or maybe some destination like that.
Well, I know some of our schools do that with honor societies, various honor societies, but, you know, the issue there is that I think Plano Senior does not do any of that, whereas West and East do. So I think graduation recognition is a good idea, but it's, you've got to get buy-in from the principals on that.
See, I don't think we have to, David. I think we're one district, and, you know, we've watched more graduations than the principals have. I mean, we're, Missy, you've probably done, what, almost 30 now? And so, so much of that, that we say is tradition, it's in the mind of the adults, it's not the children.
I will have to disagree with you completely. I have a son, he was there, he was on the committee that made the decision what Plano Senior High is going to be doing, and they are very passionate in Wildcat Nation to keep it simple. Very passionate. So, I mean, I will have to disagree on that one.
Well, I think overall, we have some of the least recognized children on the planet. I mean, we're not a place where everyone gets a medal for participating, nobody gets a medal in Plano. And so the more we can do to actually acknowledge these students who do above and beyond, I mean, we don't even have the superintendent trustee awards anymore for the top achieving children. I think we need to look hard at recognizing kids so they feel like they've made some progress. I know we think we're like the Marines, the Few, the Proud, but, I mean, kids, we could open up a little bit and do things that make them all feel valued, because they all work so hard.
And we do have, just as a point of clarity, even though we don't have the trustee awards anymore, each campus does do a recognition program, and they recognize those same kids. So that could be another opportunity area, that's not graduation-related, but campus-appropriate.
But even looking at that, to see how it could be more uniform.
Common.
I mean, the high school you go to shouldn't determine whether you're going to be recognized, and that's the way it is right now.
So that leads to my last question, that's actually a question to Dr. Kettler. You brought three principles of good policy, distributed fairness and simplicity. If you had to rank the proposal that came out of the committees, how would you rank them on those three criteria?
I really liked that question, thank you. I would, just started with distributed, there are some, there's some districts that have gone away from ranking, I mean, a number of have, you know, have, a number of districts in our area have revised DIC local, in terms of GPA policies as well. One of the things that I think is particularly commendable about the proposal that Susan brought forth, is the dual GPA system is more distributed in the sense of, like, I know a district that decided that they're, instead of having a dual GPA, they're just going to have a subset, and everybody's cumulative GPA would be calculated on the subset. Well, I, for one, have raised a child whose best grade every grading period was probably his athletics grade. And that student would not benefit from only having a subset, he benefited from having his elective classes in there. So in terms of distributed, I think the not ranking below the top 10% is very beneficial to the entire class. I think the decision to take two GPAs versus just saying, hey, we're going to do a subset, is also more distributed and benefits the whole class. And the fairness principle, I think using a subset maximizes fairness. Everybody's taking courses in those core areas. I've also seen other districts that limit the number of classes you can take in the core areas. I would commend Plano ISD's committee for recommending that that be fairly expansive to include anything that could count for graduation credit. I'll give an example, calculus is not a required math class for anybody, because you fulfill your graduation requirements by the time you get to pre-cal. So if you said, hey, we're only going to do graduation requirements, nobody's calculus, AP calculus would ever count. Or, I think in science, you'll have kids that are particularly interested in science, that may take two or three AP courses. So I think the policy of including those, all those courses certainly increases the fairness, everybody's on a level playing field regardless of electives. Then in the simplicity, you may want to, you may argue that, well, wow, two GPAs might scale back the simplicity a little bit. And I would tell you, you're probably right, but I think that it maximizes the distributed and the fairness principle, so the secret of making it as simple as possible is really clear communication. I actually agreed with one of the comments earlier, that I think I suggested this to Lisa and Susan, I said, if it were me, I would just make a chart of, here's how you absolutely have the best chance of being in the top 10%. You take credit by exam here, you take this class in eighth grade, you make sure you, just tell them, then it's no longer a secret to anybody. And I know you asked about, is there a game, and I tell you that anytime there are rules, and anytime there's a winner, it's a game. So, and in this case, top 10%, automatic admission, valedictorian scholarships, those are awards. And we have rules, and that's what we're talking about. So it's always going to be a game. The way you make it as simple as possible is you tell everybody the rules. And if everybody knows the rules, you clearly publish them in your policy, you advise students on the most likely ways they can maximize their chances, then I think you can ensure simplicity, even though on its face value, having two GPAs seems like it reduces simplicity. Personally, I have two daughters in high school right now, they're just beautiful and charming, but they're not sneaking up on the top 10%. Recently, they go to a high school that has a similar system with a few differences, so they don't rank below the top 10%, and they have a subset to calculate who's in the top 10%. I asked my daughters one morning at breakfast, I said, you know you have two GPAs? And they both looked at me and said, oh, yeah, absolutely, Dad, I mean, what do you think we are? And I said, well, what are they? And they said, well, it's your weighted GPA and your unweighted GPA. I said, that's perfect. The moral of the story is, if you're not in the top 10%, you don't even know that the subset weight ranking GPA exists. And my lovely daughters, who, one's a junior and one's a freshman, they didn't even know. And I thought, I'm happy you don't know, because that's just stress that you don't have to deal with. So while it sounds like it may increase complexity, what I would suggest is, you're going to find that only a small portion of the class is going to really think about the subset GPA.
So two daughters in high school?
Correct.
I know what you're going.
Wait right there, because while you're here, I've got a question for you. On districts that go to a scaled-back ranking GPA, you know, the four by four, whatever, do you see, have you studied whether or not you see a decrease in those non-GPA courses? So like AP art would be, I think, a good example. Do you see a decrease in students taking those types of AP courses that are non Core Four?
That's always the concern in every district that I've partnered with and, and having these conversations, that the AP art history teacher feels like her job's going to be cut, because who's going to want to take AP art history anymore? The little bit of experience I have in the follow-up and ask, and, and tracking that is those, those positions and those courses are still alive and well. I actually had one district tell me that they had no drop-off in their AP art classes. Not, not counting art history, I'm just talking about the ones where you actually create art. They, you know, the drawing and the painting and the two-dimensional. So, and, and what, the reason he described it that way, he said, what happened is your top ten percent kids would never take art one, because it would hurt their ranking GP, their, their chance at top ten percent, because it was non-weighted. So if you don't take art one, you don't get to the advanced art classes. So once you stopped ranking or weight, or counting those art classes in their ranking GPA, we had students who were in the top ten percent were happy to take art one, because now it wasn't hurting their GPA anymore. So he said, we actually had a, a funnel of students who wouldn't have ever chosen those courses now started choosing them, because it didn't hurt their GPA. So, uh, the, the few cases I have followed up, uh, they haven't had a drop-off in it. It's anecdotal. I'm not going to say I've completely, you know, measured every school.
I have a question. Susan, I have a question. Do we currently have a handout for students to show them pathway how to be in the top ten percent?
No. Moms do it at Starbucks. We all compare notes.
But will we be doing that?
Well, I'm, I'm going to be careful about saying we're going to have a handout that will tell students how to get in the top ten percent. But I, I do think, I, I liked, um, I think we need to make transparent, here's how you can maximize your opportunity to be as part, be in the top ten percent.
I'll just interject again. This is going to cost us money, because we're going to have to have calculus at all six of our high schools, our nine, ten schools, because we don't right now. And so I don't want to have kids disadvantaged, because they have to spend time on the bus getting to Vines when the kids at Jasper don't. So we're going to have to look hard at that. I am very supportive of this policy. I like the idea of the Latin honors. And I know for my kids, this would have been a tremendous help. I mean, my son definitely marched to a different drummer. He took Chinese, the only non-native speaker in the class. He got, you know, A minuses that he worked so hard for. He could have stayed in Spanish, made A pluses. And it dropped him out of scholarship range at A and M. I know it did. And so, this would have been a tremendous help. So I, I applaud that.
I have a couple of questions. Um, and Susan, I don't mean to be a broken record, okay? When I went through the comments from the students and the parents, I, I kept seeing a recurring theme about the international baccalaureate program at Plano East. And I've, I know that we've updated our website recently. And I just wonder if we're communicating how that, um, uh, group of students impacts Plano East. And then the other piece, um, these are both really communication things. The other one is, I saw a lot of commentary about the state mandated top ten percent. A lot of people were saying, I just can't believe that they do this, and, you know, and it was, it was, it's out of our control. So I feel like it might be beneficial for us to kind of explain that, um, communicate, you know, communicate that to parents, so that they don't feel like we're somehow disadvantaging the students. But so the IB and then that state top ten explanation.
Yeah, I, I would agree. We heard the same, um, we, we, I think in every communication tour, we stayed after at length and talked to, uh, a small group of parents about the top ten percent requirement. So I would agree with that. I, I would also echo, we, um, there were, there were some clustered comments about the unfairness of, uh, students transferring to Plano East for the IB program. And I think that that's, it certainly, um, I, I think we're committed as a district to looking at our IB program, number one, so I'm going to set that aside. I, I would share, we also heard at, uh, at, at least at one of our meetings, from a Plano Senior High parent who felt very strongly that, um, it was unfair that students were allowed to transfer to Plano Senior High from Plano West, where they felt like, uh, students were doing that, because they felt there was a advantage to, um, getting into the top ten percent there. So it's, while I understand it's easier to identify the problem at Plano East, I don't know that it's as simple as it's just at Plano East. But that is something that, um, we need to look at.
Thank you.
Okay, a couple of things. Thanks again, Susan, for all you've done. And I heard Miss Isay, and I was curious, I completely appreciate wanting to roll out the system completely for our current seventh graders. But there are some really great aspects of this. Could you address what, and I get you have to have the systems in place to make that happen, but could you address some of the things like the Latin system, the, um, rank of transcripts, and, and how that is being treated now? And maybe some of these things we could roll out, um, slowly instead of all at once?
Really appreciate you asking that, because I actually omitted a comment that I meant to make on the, on the, um, slide I, that talked about ranking, um, beginning only at the eleventh grade year. I had a notation on that slide. That's actually one, and one that the committees discussed, that could be implemented really next year. There's nothing that requires us to, to provide rank. It's not in policy anywhere. It's history. That, um, so that is a practice, if the board chose, um, could be implemented.
To clarify, that means that then at the nine, ten schools, rank would not be addressed.
Correct.
Okay. And I just want to add, anecdotal, that it was, um, a concept for both of my children in how far their rank would plummet after they were merged with the other high school. And it was a very sad commentary. There wasn't just our cluster, but other clusters. And I think that, that's probably one of the easiest, best improvements.
I would agree. And, and that's why I say, providing that rank at nine, ten is misleading and inaccurate. And I, so, yes, that, that is certainly something that, if the board chose, that was actually a recommendation from the committee. There would be nothing that would prevent us from implementing the Latin system sooner. Um, we, we would need a little bit of time, and I, I don't know what that would entail to determine what the appropriate, um, cuts would be for those particular designations. But those type of things could certainly be implemented and would not affect kids midstream in course selection, or it really wouldn't have an effect on that.
I wonder, is it possible that you could go ahead on the nine, ten and combine the two schools and do a rank that way? Or is that just impossible?
It, it, it's a possibility. Um, I, I would say also, Nancy, that the nine, ten principals would report that that's just a really unhealthy practice, that they, um, kids, um, a couple of things happen. One, developmentally, they are adjusting to high school. And what's, what's part, um, all that that entails. And two, they haven't taken enough courses yet to really know where they're going to stand in class rank. So, um, it gives students kind of a, a misinformed perception, um, of where they are. But is that possible for us to do? Yes, we, we could do that. Now, what it doesn't account for is, we don't know what students actually are going to land there in their eleventh grade year. And so it, there's still a, a good percentage of students that move in and out of that class. But yes, we, we could do that if that was what the board determined they wanted.
And the other question I have is the rank on the transcript. Is there a possibility that that could be only ten percent on the transcript? And it be removed from the transcript for all of their students in a, I know that's a hard one. But before the seventh graders?
Can you ask me that again? Oh, removing rank from the transcript?
I mean, have it be the cumulative rank, but since it's, and what purpose does it serve? Is it something that we could go ahead and remove? Does that make, does that make sense now?
The rank or the GPA?
GPA has to stay on there. I'm, I'm saying for the rank piece, is it possible that it's only reported for ten percent and above for cumulative for some subsequent classes between the current seventh graders and our current class?
I, I would say it's possible, um, but I would also say, we, we try to be very cautious about changing anything related to pathway to graduation midstream for students. And part of why I might be hesitant to recommend that is, the real impact of this is student's choice of courses, and how we hope it will affect that in having the ranking GPA be part of this. So for students who are already in the pipeline and have already made course selections, you're changing part of the system, but not really the causal part of it.
So Susan, in, in that regard, um, maybe give this some thought, that if, if we have our expert and we, we have mathematically can prove that our kids are being harmed by having their rank reflected on their transcript and then reported to colleges, there may be a benefit to taking action sooner rather than later if we've got kids who are, you know, thirty percent, who are not getting admitted into schools that they otherwise would be had they not put their class rank on there. You know, maybe give that some thought, as to whether it's something that we fast-track. One question I had on, um, the slide, your slide for evaluating courses for grade weighting, what's the timetable for that? Is that like a next year thing to put in place for the following year?
Yes. Yeah. We, we'll develop it, and then we'll bring all courses back, so that by the time our eighth grade students who would be affected by this change, will be signing up for courses, we will have a clear designation of, here are courses that will be weighted at each of these weighting categories.
Susan, or Katrina, a question. If I wanted to, if a student wanted to take the minimum possible, just meet the requirements in math, what would be the highest math class?
Pre-cal.
Pre-cal or statistics?
Yeah, math models.
Okay. So, um, one of the comments that, that I received several times was that, uh, the, having two GPAs was too complicated, wasn't simple enough. I asked, um, the same question. So you admit that we reduce the simplicity somewhat to benefit the others. I have to tell you, we have students that are taking pre-cal or statistics or mathematical models. Uh, I don't expect that that's going to be too, too hard on them, too complex, that calculation. Uh, I wanted to thank you all for the work that you've done. It's very thorough. It departs from the tradition. It departs from the way we're doing things. And, and that's great, because we need to adapt, because the world is changing. I know that my younger daughter, uh, who's a junior in Plano West, she keeps complaining about how hard it is. And I have to remind her that she's getting better education. She's getting better education than what other districts can offer. And I don't think that we need to be apologetic about this. Uh, I want to finish with just one thing. You touched on the fact that the board, uh, has provided guidelines, six guidelines. And so I looked at those guidelines to see how we track. So just like I asked you about the three, your three principles, I looked at our guidelines. Uh, we, we're looking for ways to reduce gamesmanship of class selection versus GPA. I think this, uh, plan achieves that. Uh, we're looking for ways to support fine arts, sports, et cetera, or at least minimize the penalty for participation, uh, participation in those. I think we're achieving that. Encourage exploration of different interests. We're achieving that. Reduce stress, especially if you're not at the top ten percent. I think it's achieving that. Need to be realistic and practical about what colleges are really seeking. So it seems like you've done a very good job of, uh, following up with colleges, even from last year to this year. And competition is a fact of life inherent in any GPS, GPA system. We're not really asking you, uh, for anything. So I think, um, given that, uh, the work that you've done, and the recommendations, I, I think they meet the guidelines that we offered.
I think really just to, um, respond to what David and Jerry both said, I think we should think about doing, taking away the ranking sooner rather than later. Because if we say it's harmful to our children, why would we continue it? But also say, the kids in the top ten percent now under this system are probably going to be the kids in the top ten percent under the new system. So I don't see that we're doing harm to either body. So, why would we want to continue it past this year, next year?
Yeah, I, I would support the same. It's, it doesn't have to be all or nothing. We can start.
So, I'd like to make a few comments. Does anyone else have anything else they want to say before? Then we'll wrap this up. At the end of this discussion, we'll take a brief recess and have a little body break, and then we'll come back and get on the budget. So, um, man, this is a long time coming. And let me just say, at the beginning, I think you headed out of the park, in my opinion.
Which is a baseball term.
Oh, good. I'm glad you told me that.
And you did, you did everything we asked you to do, and you did it the way that we asked you to do it, by including others. Um, the selection process was neutral. And, you know, to make sure that we had great representation across the district and different experiences and attributes and so forth. You listened to, you talked to the community, you listened to the feedback from the establishment of the groups that you had, and from the visits that you did at middle school. I'm just impressed with the process that you used, the experts that you brought in, and the community members that you engaged, and the talent in the district that you brought to this project. I know last year, when we asked you to continue working, I know it was a disappointment, and it was frustrating. But I really think it was the right thing to do, because what you've all come back with is rich. And so now, that's my board member hat. Now my parent hat. So, we started this discussion as a district years ago, but we didn't get to finish it. And, um, you know, we all look at these opportunities that we have to serve as trustees through our own personal experience lens a lot of times. And we relate to, you know, how, how, how would this, you know, relate to my family's experience? And to try to help us understand the context of it, and set our frame of reference. So, um, this has been a very personal journey for my family, because, you know, I have one child, and we encountered all of the things that you've heard. And I, my daughter and I met with Dr. Enzley to plead for help, because it was an unhealthy culture. And, um, a lot of things came out of that conversation. This is one of those things where I felt like as a board member, I am compelled to do something to make it better for our kids, because it's unhealthy from a mental health point of view. It's an, it's an inappropriate climate. And something dress, there has to be some kind of major disruption to the process. And so what I think you've brought is a disruption to that unhealthy culture. I think it's led to positive discussions that we're having about mental health in our children and on our staff. As a result of thinking about how we can do better as a district to help our kids be successful in life and not just in school. So, you know, I knew that it was not going to be better in my family, the experiences that we were having, and the climate, and the culture, and all of that stuff. But I knew it would be better for the kids behind us. So, having said that, if there's any bit of the recommendations that you can escalate from a recommendation point of view sooner, to make a favorable impression, a favorable experience to more kids sooner rather than later, I'm on board with that. I'll let you determine what those are. I mean, I would ask you to please determine what those are. Based upon your professional expertise. But, um, I'm just really proud of the work that you've all done. And I think the time that all of you have spent and the commitment that you've given to this project, I know it's been hard, but, um, as a parent, I thank you. As a board member, I thank you. So, can, any, any you want to add?
I just want to add one thing, and I'm, I'm talking on the parent hat here. And both my kids are in college now. But I know my daughter, um, you know, she was the IB student, but she did drill team. And, and she was able to get into a top-tier university. And I- drill team and she was able to get into a top-tier university and I applaud that. But I had a son who was, I think he was, oh, he'll kill me if I say what percentage, he was in that.
Out of the top ten.
Next group, almost, anyway. And my point is.
I'll send him an email.
Yeah, don't, he'll watch this, don't. But my point is, I think he would have benefited from this. And he landed fine because of his education here in Plano ISD. But I do believe that both of my kiddos would have benefited from this, my daughter from the stress because I know that group of kids, they recalculate their GPA every day. And my son, who was kind of a little bit, you know, not in that same focus, he would have definitely benefited from this. And so I echo exactly what Missy said because, you know, last year we heard part of the story and then we realized that weighting, that course weighting is so important, it's the extra piece of the puzzle and the light bulb has totally illuminated now. And we so appreciate the work that you've done and the committee and I know it's a lot of time because I took the time to read all the comments, I know. But we are very appreciative of the study and the inclusion of the community in this. Thank you.
All right, on that note, let's take like a, let's come back at twenty till, so have like a seven-minute recess, please, and then we'll continue. All right, well, you're going to have to wait because we have safety and security. Okay. All right, recess is over. Okay. Dr. Kerry Cooper, Assistant Superintendent of District Services, will introduce a report on safety and security, the safety and security budget proposal and program expansion. Dr. Cooper.
Thank you, Ms. Bender, members of the board. I would like to introduce, everybody knows Joe Parks, he's our Executive Director of Safety and Security and we're going to tag-team our topic similar to what Susan and Lisa did. We'll attempt to do as outstanding as they knock it out of the park, so to speak. We, I would like to give a little bit of introduction as we get into the presentation. Couple of terms that want to clarify, one is this SRO, which is the School Resource Officer, and the other is the CPO, which is the Campus Patrol Officer. The SROs are those on-duty, full-time officers that we split the cost and expenses with, with the city, City of Plano, and then also the City of Murphy in the, from McMillan and Murphy Middle School area. And then the Campus Patrol Officers are off-duty contract officers that have an hourly rate that cover our elementary campuses. So I just want to clarify that as we get into the, you'll see that quite a bit during the presentation. From the history standpoint, for many, many years, we did have SROs at all of our secondary campuses and then in the about, I was trying to remember because I was a middle school principal at the time and we, due to a variety of reasons, a lot of them heavily on the budget with the city and the school district. So we started gradually reducing the presence of our SROs, especially on our middle school campuses, kind of around 2006, 2008 window. And then ever since then, only had them at our high schools and senior highs. So what we're going to do is talk to you about our proposal and the staffing to get back at the, having representation of our SROs on all of our secondary campuses and some additional support at our senior highs. We also do want to mention that as we do look at other districts, specifically our most, our closest neighbors, as we do compensation and many other of our programs and activities, but with, in looking at our neighbors, the consistent model is that they do have SROs, officers on all of their secondary campuses. So I did want to share that as, that as well. Joe's going to talk a little bit about the detail of our proposal and what those officers in that locations will look like.
So, members of the board, the current staffing we have of our SRO program puts one SRO at each high school, wins special program center and one officer at each senior high. There's one sergeant that supervises the nine SROs from Plano and then we have one SRO at McMillan from Murphy PD. What the increase to reestablish the program to its prior levels will do, it will add fifteen officers and one sergeant because the span of control has gotten too large when you get to twenty-three, twenty-four officers for one supervisor. This will allow us to put one full-time SRO at every middle school, add an SRO that will provide some service to the Academy High School and also add a second SRO at a senior high school. The other, I'm sorry, Dr. Cooper, you're going to talk about the vehicles.
Go ahead.
Okay. One other component with this, and this is sort of in line with following the models that some of the other school districts in the area follow, Frisco, McKennan, is having your middle school SRO provide law enforcement services to the elementary schools that feed into those middle schools. So to do that adequately, they would need to have a vehicle. We initially had some discussions with the city over the cost of vehicles provided by the city. Vehicles that the city uses, they're very expensive because they build in depreciation of some equipment that might not be needed by the SRO every day. And we can essentially purchase and own vehicles that are adequate for less than our fifty percent share of a vehicle furnished by the City of Plano. So the other component to this SRO, this reestablishment of the SRO program is to add vehicles for the middle school SROs to use. It's a deterrent while the cars park at the middle school. It gives them transportation to the elementary schools again with, you know, the visibility of having a marked unit as well as the understanding that they're going to provide service to the feeder elementary schools.
Can I ask a question? What kind of services do the feeder elementary schools require and what, how, what is the frequency of that sort of service?
I mean, probably the, you know, the calls for service directly related to a student committing a criminal act is probably low. We do have instances where there's a family disturbance in the parking lot, custody dispute, suspicious person type, things like that. And so that would be part of it. The other would be to give some high visibility patrol as a deterrent effect at those campuses.
Okay, so I guess what I'm also asking is how often would the officer be leaving the middle school or the secondary school to serve? What is the frequency on those?
I mean, we haven't set that in stone yet, but the idea would be, you know, that they would, they would make, at some point during each day, they would visit the feeder elementary schools.
Okay, thank you.
And that would be inclusive of a drive around as per from the elementary campus and/or get out of the vehicle and walk through the, through the building, a combination of both of those, which is similar to what they do now, but it probably won't be to the same extent that they do now. I want to point out the, on the, specifically on the CPO, you'll see there in seventeen eighteen and eighteen nineteen, that four hundred thousand, thanks to the CPO program. So in nineteen twenty, when you see that one forty, that is an offset because as the, as the SROs are placed on middle schools, then we will scale back the CPO number of officers that we, that we have. So that's why there's a, there would be a reduction in that area.
I have a question about the patrol vehicles. Could we spend bond money to buy those vehicles?
Where's Ms. Waschke? We cannot.
But we can do it for buses?
Only.
Hmm, why? Oh, you're talking about the current bond?
Even the current bond because we try to make the bond sufficiently broad that allows us flexibility that as we're going to see the depressing slide for our fund balance, the more we can spend out of bond, the more it protects that fund balance for the long term.
And we can check with Bond Council on that. I will tell you the way our projects are bidding right now with inflation being eight to fifteen percent per year, we're coming in over budget on about every project even with inflation. And so, so we can look into that. I'm really kind of pulling the reins back right now on any additional bond items that weren't already considered just because I'm trying to cover the current projects.
Or we train our officers to drive buses.
They can load those up.
Creative.
I wonder if there's a public-private partnership opportunity on this where we could maybe go to an auto manufacturer that's new to town and maybe this is an opportunity for them to help in this area of security with some of their vehicles, maybe at a reduced cost at least? If not.
We can absolutely look at, look at doing that.
What about our campuses that are in Dallas? I saw you saw the Murphy, we have several campuses that are in the Dallas City limits.
Frankfurt, Rose Hager, Mitchell area.
Right, so we have, you know, five, schools in five cities. And so with the different police departments. We've not identified a way in the City of Dallas to have what would be considered a full-time SRO because the City of Dallas, my understanding, does not do the fifty-fifty split SRO type model. So the plan for that is we're going to take one of the existing CPO slots, which is an officer every day for the whole school day and put that slot at Frankfurt Middle School so they would have an off-duty officer at the school every day, all day, with a vehicle who would also go to the Rose Hager and Mitchell.
The last item that, what, they got back, next to the last line, the safety monitor positions, as you're well aware, the number of enhancements and part of the bond that is geared towards the senior highs and the access controls, the intercom system, and then the monitoring system from the camera, the screens and things for the various entrances around the, around the campus. So as we continue to look at the, what is getting ready to be installed this summer, we discussed the ways that we can really leverage that and also kind of get a more bang for the buck, both from monitoring and having people available to do this throughout the day and once again, rather than just have various times of the day to lock the doors and unlock them, just keep them locked at all the time and then use a similar system that we do with all the other campus levels where they are going to a specific door and they are trying to get buzzed in and somebody from a centralized location at the campus can monitor those and then allow access to students or the individual who is, you know, we've already discussed in a previous meeting that Joe shared a lot of things that are currently doing, safety-wise, and some things that are being proposed and the badges at the high schools and senior highs that the students need to start wearing this next year, the days they're identified so that they can, you know, get allowed to go into the, to the building. So the, there's going to be some other responsibilities of this disposition as well.
The safety monitor position, what the, what the vision is, is that, you know, each of the senior highs, these are our most challenging campuses because they were constructed as separate buildings, they're essentially junior colleges. So when we complete the access control enhancements, the original plan was one door per building, which we call a straggler door, would be left unlocked during the school day so that people who are coming and going, students who are late, going to the nurse, staff members, they would still be able to go in and out of the building because they are just going to have to. When we have all the new access control equipment installed, the idea evolved that we could have all, you know, the remote door unlocks, like you have at the front door of any other school, one for each building at a central location at the campus and would actually have a staff member whose job was to monitor those cameras on those doors and operate the remote doors. So that would be a primary function. Another function would be to monitor the security cameras at the senior highs and potentially other campuses as well from that centralized location so that they would monitor the cameras in live time. The idea is they would have radio and phone communication with the SROs and administrators so if they observed something concerned, they could notify the SRO, they could put the campus in lockdown if that was appropriate because the PA system and access control system will all be integrated and could be operated from that central location. The last thing this employee would do would be, you know, an additional set of eyes and ears that could walk the campus, you know, looking for doors that were ajar, suspicious people, interlopers, people that shouldn't be there, all of that and could immediately radio the SRO or campus administrator to come check it out.
Does each senior high campus have a golf cart so that those people can get around quickly?
That I don't know.
I've seen one at Plano East, but I just thought that, they do?
Yeah.
Okay, because that seems like a handy tool.
And one of the, the two vehicles that you see, I was listening a while ago, but I don't know if I heard you say this or not. The two vehicles that you see that we would purchase going into next year or to have a vehicle at each senior high, we would pull one out of the existing fleet, the CPO fleet, and then two new ones would go to, go to schools. So we would even have more improved golf cart in the form of a vehicle that could be used. We want to, on this next slide, share a little bit of information so you can kind of see the difference in the cost of, okay, SRO, contract officer, you can see the sergeant a little bit as the cost associated with that and then the vehicles that Joe mentioned as well. I think we've talked, talked specific individual unit dollars, but we wanted to just give you a quick, quick look at those.
And just to clarify on the SRO portions of the slide, that is, that is our half. That is, you know, fifty percent we bear, there's corresponding amount borne by the city that is providing the officer.
So I'm lost with that. He chose seventy-eight, almost seventy-nine thousand dollars, that's our half?
That's our half. And that, that figure comes to a surprise to a lot of people, including Randy when we were discussing it earlier in the week. What that is comprised of is the officer's salary, they build in benefits, they build in a one-time cost when the, when the officer, the first year of that officer's existence, if you will, for equipment, training, I mean, everything down to weapons, body armor, personal protective equipment for hazardous material scenario, there's a ton of equipment that goes with these officers. And then they have some ongoing costs, consumable supplies that they use throughout the year, ongoing training, you know, weapons, maintenance, things like that. So the first year, there's a one-time cost of about, our share, about fourteen thousand dollars per officer and about, the ongoing cost is about thirty-six hundred dollars per officer per year. So after the first year, that, those one-time costs fall out, fall off, but the salary benefits and ongoing costs continue.
But I just recently saw the numbers. I know that the Plano Police pays more than Dallas, for example, but they're still at about sixty thousand.
Well, a, a, probably about a one or two-year officer at Plano, the base salary, just salary is probably in the low sixties, but I'll tell you, Plano, Plano PD is the number one or two highest-paid police department in the state. They typically are, if you look at. They, they typically are, uh, if you look at, uh, the progression from the academy to about the third or fifth year, I forgot how they cut it off, but it, the, Plano PD is one of the highest-paid departments in the state. And, and these numbers reflect that.
We've talked about the, the access control equipment, uh, systems gonna be installed and coming from the bond. That's the top section there of this slide. The last two things we want to, to mention is the number of elementary, in our elementary campuses inside the grade-level pod areas, we have found that, uh, each of them will typically have at least one locking classroom door. Now, this is separate from the double doors that are coming off of the main corridor into the grade-level pods. So those doors lock and then inside, the, once you're inside the pod, there's at least one, um, one door that is a, a locking classroom. Now, what we're going to, what we are proposing is to make sure that every pod has at least one. And really, we would like to go ahead and add an additional locking classroom door in each of the, each of the elementary, uh, grade-level pod areas. Um, that, that is a, a cost. We've worked with, uh, facilities and these are some estimates that we have. And, because many of the current, the existing openings are wider than a regular door, so it's not just coming in for the standard frame, the door. And there's gonna have to be some, uh, some construction costs that go on. And then the hardware, obviously, and, and the doors and those kinda things. And Joe's team has gone out physically to each campus and each grade level and each pod, and that's, that's where this number is coming from. And we will continue though, if it's, if there needs to be a, a one-off here and there, then we'll address those as needed. But that's, that's where the, uh, and this will be an ongoing project. There's no way with the number of things that we have going on, construction with, uh, the, the big, the renovations, refurbishments, those kinda things in the district that we would be able to do this all, like in the summer. But this would be a gradual process and we can, uh, get, get to these in a, in a pretty timely manner. This last one is the window coverings. We have a, a few classrooms, areas that are on some campuses. I can think of two specific, uh, high school, a senior high, but we have some others where the majority of the classroom is almost like in a fishbowl. Uh, the, the walls are, are glass, you're, you're, it's, you're, there's just no curtains, no blinds, uh, screens, some type of a concealment in case that we get into a lockdown situation or any other situation where the, the, the teacher, the campus feels like they need to get those windows covered. So, we don't have an exact cost. We have not identified yet what material we'll be using. Uh, we'll be working with the campuses so that we can, you know, go through and, and make, make those decisions. But we'll, we'll get a figure here in a, in a pretty timely manner to, to get on, on top of the proposal, the total proposal as well. But it shouldn't be anything, uh, anything very extensive. The, I do wanna close unless Joe has a couple of comments, uh, potentially as well. But just wanna share, and I meant to do this on the front end. We were going to be coming to you with this proposal. We've talked about this really for, not, not these details, but the SRO piece. We, we've talked about this for really the last two or three years. Um, and then just coincidentally, over the last probably two or three months, Joe and Chief Russian with the Plano PD have had some, you know, sat down and had some conversation about, okay, let's, what, let's, SRO program, let's really think about, is it time to bring that back? Do we need to go to the, you know, do the budget process? Of course, their, their, their fiscal year is on a little bit different, uh, window. And, and as you're aware, they've already visited with the city council and, and, and starting to move forward a little bit. So, I do wanna share that because this is not a reactionary, uh, response to the unfortunate situation in Florida or any other, uh, school shooting incident that's happened. So I did wanna share that with you and I, I think that's important so that we're not just a knee-jerk reaction. Let's go, you know, spend a million plus on, on whatever we can do to, to try to make some. This, this, this has been a conversation that we've had for, for quite some time. And then, the other thing with Joe's group, and he shared this with the community meetings, that they did a great job with. I hope you've seen the, the video of, of one of those. I think that the, the video is, is up. I'm not sure yet you're, uh, starring role, but it's, it's coming. Um, you've starred in two recent movie features.
Stared maybe, uh...
Movie features?
But, then, these, these processes are things that Joe and his team, this is what they do every day, all day, and on weekends and holidays. Is, you know, they, they continue to, to think about what, what our campuses need, what programs, the, the things that we can have in place, whether they're, uh, responses, uh, preventions, deterrence, those kinda things. So, I appreciate him sharing those in the, with the, the parents and the people that attended the, the meetings. But I, I did wanna share that with you once again, 'cause it just to reinforce, this is not a, okay, what are we gonna do now? We, we, his team does a great job. We don't get into, uh, just immediately get into a reactionary-type situation. And I, I really appreciate the expertise that he brings in his group so we can, uh, continue to, to make decisions in a pretty timely manner. And it's not just always in a, in a reactionary mode.
I, I just wanted to add that, like Dr. Cooper said, um, when these school tragedies happen, um, and this is across the country, uh, school districts, including us, get inundated with requests by vendors, consultants, salesmen, saleswomen, uh, selling computer systems, gadgets, technology, uh, apps. And, and so we, and we, we look at a lot of this throughout the year and, and, you know, everybody's always trying to sell a better mousetrap. Uh, but we do try to, uh, look at these requests in a thoughtful manner so that we are being judicious with the funds we're requesting. And we, we try to look for, um, security improvements that have a, have a broad, a wide spectrum of applicability uh, so that we're not just, you know, trying to counter the, the threat du jour that's in the media. Uh, because it, it, there's, there's a number of things we want to keep our eye on. And if you focus too hard on one, you're not watching the rest of the shot. So, you know, where we can modify things with processes or technology, we try to do that. Uh, sometimes it comes down to, to people, personnel and equipment. And, and, uh, these are the things that, uh, you know, I, I sincerely feel would make a, a, a major difference in the level of security at the district. Uh, and, and would just like to share that.
Well, I'd like to point out that I watched your starring role in the video. And that was in, an amazingly compelling video. I have to shout out to your department too, Carla. Um, that's key to part of our security is involving the students and having them be a part of it. And I thought buying in on the app and showing them how to load it was so important. I think that was a great video and thank you for doing that.
Well, the, the communications department, Leslie Rainstein and Jonathan Miller, they're the ones that deserve all the credit for that because they, they are wizards with the, with the video and editing, so.
Good job.
Any other questions for?
Sarah, do you wanna make any comments?
I just wanted to thank Joe and Carrie. Um, it's not easy when, when tragedies happen to respond in ways that, that make people feel better about what is, what we're trying to do. And, and that's really challenging because, you know, parents are sending their kids to us and the teachers come to work every day. And, you know, we, we, we want to do everything we can to maximize every opportunity for making our schools more safe. And, and they've done a really thoughtful job of, of coming to these types of decisions and, and, you know, continuing to look and look and will continue to evaluate, is there anything else we need to, to be doing? And so, you know, for hosting parent meetings and, and taking input from parents and listening and, and then to the production of the video, which took the entire team, um, Carla and the communications staff and Dan with technology and, and Carrie and, and Joe and their teams, and then, and then the campus principals and Susan. I mean, it took the whole group to, to make that happen, um, so that we were able to produce some pretty significant results on Friday. So while we were also watching all of the news roll out, um, we had that app downloaded that we know of right now on that day, more than five thousand devices in a day. And we had principals tell me how many tips they got that day. And already, and, and one, one was a significant tip of importance to the parent and, and was able to get help on Friday for their child for the use of the tip line. And so, um, I think it was a really great thing for us to be known for on Friday was, um, we take it sa- we take it seriously and it is everyone's responsibility. And even the kids who put in a tip that wasn't completely serious, which we were able to easily weed out, we were okay with that because we know that when those kids need to use the tip line, they will have already done it once. And that's okay too, 'cause practice makes perfect. And so we want that comfort level with, with the tip line. So, I just wanna thank the team, you know, it's, it's, it's an ongoing process, but there have been some heroic efforts on this side. So thanks a lot.
Very good. Thank you very much. Sticking with our baseball theme, Randy, you're up. You're at bat.
Thank you, Preston Bender, members of the board. Uh, so tonight we, uh, we do bring you the latest budget report. And some of the topics that are included in this are the, uh, some more detail on the, on the department budgets and some adds, uh, and some deletions there. Also a look at staffing and some of the recommendations. And then a long-term look at our fund balance and the implications, uh, that the budget has there. Uh, the budget process for twenty eighteen nineteen is very similar to prior years. We have the line-out on budgets and staffing requests that are coming in, uh, from the different departments to their designated cabinet member. Those are then taken to cabinet and reviewed by the superintendent and, and the cabinet as we prioritize. Uh, I can tell you when we started this process, uh, several weeks ago, we were, uh, around a fifteen-million-dollar deficit budget. And, uh, so, so that's just the volume of requests that have come in and we've been working diligently to reduce that down. Uh, and then we bring these, as we are tonight, we bring these department budgets, uh, to the board, um, for your consideration. Just a quick summary as far as department budgets go, and these are primarily non-salary. And so the current year adopted, uh, department budget is about eighty-three point three million. Uh, we had some one-time reoccurring, uh, that, that were approved for this year that will come back out and that's a million, six hundred and twenty-four. A million of that was for extended planning time. And so we'll be talking more about that. We did not end up spending all of that. We spent about half, uh, or projected to spend about half, and so we'll be talking about that. Uh, some other proposals on additions. Uh, we have about two-point-four-five million in department budgets that are additions. And, uh, that is excluding the security plan that was discussed earlier. I do have a slide on it just to bring it in at the end as a, at the bottom line. Uh, reductions, I'll, I'll show you what those are here, more of a breakdown of those, at about eight-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand in department budgets. And then we had some one-time non-recurring additions of three-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand. And so that takes our total department budgets to about eighty-three point six million. Uh, when we look at the budget reductions, the department reductions, these are ones that were made voluntarily by departments as they reviewed their budgets. Uh, I will tell you, next year, we're gonna do a different process and we're going to go more of a zero-based budget where really we start and you have to justify everything that you ask for. And so that, that's something that needs to be done. If it's not done every year, it needs to be done periodically, just to reassess, what do you really need? Take the time with your department to really look at, at what your department needs and give us some detail on that. Uh, but of the four-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand that was reduced, a hundred-and-forty-five thousand was just reduced out of technology. Uh, thirty thousand was reduced out of academic services. Seventy-three point five thousand, or seventy-three thousand five hundred was reduced out of elementary academics. One-hundred-and-one thousand was reduced out of secondary academics. And forty-six thousand was reduced out of special ed operating budget. Uh, those are the bigger items. That's not everything that was reduced, but just to give you an idea. Uh, so, so people did come to the table really looking at, what, what do I think I can give back to try to fund some of the things, uh, that were on the list? Uh, we also had contingency reductions of about three-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand. Uh, this is money that we have in the budget of, for, as it says, contingency, things that come up. Uh, it could be a staffing situation, it could be something else. Uh, but we reduced that by three-seventy-four. So the total of those is eight-hundred-and-twenty-nine that I showed you on the earlier slide. Uh, when we look at the total department budgets, uh, we, again, we talked about it was about eighty-three point three million the current year, about eighty-three point six-four for the coming year is what we have recommended. That's an increase of three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand or point four percent. So that's relatively very close to where the current year budget is. As we moved into it, we did look at the budget goals that we adopted, uh, I believe that was back in November. And then we also looked at the board goals to, to try to see how, what we were looking at align, uh, to these goals and these initiatives. And then what we did is, is we, for this display, for this part of the presentation, we've listed it by board goal. And this is different than it's been done in previous years and hopefully will help you understand on, on where we're trying to accomplish your goals. Uh, so the first of those is student learning, and I'll run through these pretty quick and please stop me if you have a question. Uh, we have expans- oh, first let me tell you, over on the far right you see reoccurring. So that's obviously what it looks like, that that's gonna be an ongoing cause. The noes mean it's a one-time and, and so we come back out of the budget for nineteen-twenty. Uh, a- as we have things that come in and go out every year with new initiatives and, and expiring ones. Uh, expansion of the robotics program. Uh, we're going from forty-five campuses to sixty-one that will be participating in robotics. Uh, that's forty-four thousand. Dyslexia training, uh, that's required, teacher materials and student books. The, the, uh, total of those is twenty-four thousand five hundred. Campus improvement process for high-reliability schools, sixty-two thousand. Uh, curriculum planner conversion, uh, this is the final year of that, at ninety thousand. Uh, and that's to complete the work on the unified curriculum. IB program review that's required when you're in an IB program, that's seventy-seven hundred. ESL certification for our ELA teachers at middle school, uh, that's a one-time, for the current year of seventy thousand. And then I talked about how we took out the million for, um, for, for the extended learning. And this is adding back in four-hundred-and-eighty thousand of that for the continuation of extended planning time. So that's for substitutes.
Randy, could you remind me how much planning time each teacher gets for that? Is it one day a year of extra planning time? What does it actually work out to be?
I cannot answer that, but I bet somebody else can.
The campuses are assigned, uh, substitute codes based on two per staff member. So, uh, campuses were given the flexibility for teachers to meet all day twice or half a day four times. You know, they, the substitutes cover second grade in the morning and third grade in the afternoon. But, but that's a campus decision in how they're splitting up that time.
So it's two substitutes per campus for the entire year?
Per teacher.
Per teacher, okay. Do the teachers, have they, considering what it costs, do they think it has that benefit?
The feedback, uh, we've been receiving, and we did, we have asked teachers that at the end of their extended planning day or half-day, to complete a short electronic exit ticket, the feedback is extraordinarily positive.
One of the things, as I've been out visiting with principals and asked the question, because trying to gauge what they're getting out of that, is that the principals have said that on the first planning day, it's a little, it, it was a little bit like, what do we do with this time we have? And by the second or the third, if they're doing the half-days, they're, oh my gosh, we need a, we need another one. 'Cause they're digging so deeply into the work around instruction and purposeful planning for instruction and meeting student needs that they're really finding a, a great value in how it's impacting their teaching. So, from the principal perspective, it's been, uh, pretty impactful, I think.
Any more questions on those items? Okay, the second board goal is efficient use of resources. Uh, first of these, we've had, this is gonna be a two-to-three-year plan, but it's replaced... First of these, we've had, this is going to be a two-to-three-year plan, but it's replacement of the painted walls, the IDEA walls, in classrooms. And I guess those haven't worked out quite like we thought. We've got a lot of chipping, we've got some shadowing, maybe sometimes the wrong markers have been used, but whatever, they haven't always cleaned up back to their original. And so we'll begin a plan of replacing those, probably replacing those in some way, but putting a regular marker board over the top of them. And so we're still working on a plan. We would have to do that with in-house labor, but this would just be the cost for the first year of the marker boards. Increase in custodial cost, about 150,000. That's for additional facilities at adult transition and the additional square footage over at Plano East. And then it's also just the built-in inflationary factor in the contract, just the CPI increase. Increase in recycling and trash services, nothing we can do about those, those are just passed on to us, about 123,000. Increase in appraisal district cost, 570,000. And that's just because his values keep going up, and the school, it's based on how much tax each entity generates, and the school keeps generating more. We will get an offset on that for a portion of that on the recapture payment. So make sure we have 34% recapture, so we'll get a credit for 34% of our appraisal cost.
So this is appraisal of our properties?
Of the properties that are taxed within Plano ISD, so Collin County.
So we should ask them to stop doing that.
We have expansion of communications department by one staff member. We have the one-time expenditure of replacement of football helmets at middle schools at just under 80, right at 80,000. And so the total of that is about 1.1 million.
Hey Randy, let me ask you just a real quick question philosophically here. I get replacement of marker boards being an additional cost here for general, use of general fund, but why are we drawing funds out of the general fund? Never mind. I'm just completely brain cramped.
Fair enough.
We will get to fund balance later.
Okay, the next board goal is commitment to equity. So we've looked at expanding summer school for elementary by one week. And secondly, is waiving the tuition fee on students that are free or reduced. And so we really need those students in summer school, and so this would waive the tuition fee for them. Next, we have the social-emotional leader stoppings for the system expansion. That would be $40,000. That would be ongoing. And then the initialization of the social-emotional leader materials, or the materials they need to initialize that, that's a one-time expense at 54,400. Additional four social workers at elementary campuses. This is a half-social worker at eight different elementary schools. I've got those listed here if you want to know them, but those are planned out. Addition of an assistant principal at campuses with the centralized special education program. That is to be determined where those programs are placed, but that would be the funds needed for an additional assistant principal. Next, we have addition of assistant principals at two campuses for school improvement, and those are to be determined as well. Okay, I'm sorry, Williams and Meadows, for those two additional assistant principals. Addition of one counselor, that would be a split between Barksdale and Gullidge. And so the total on that category is 783,000.
I'm certainly happy to see the additional social workers. I thought we were told in a previous meeting that sharing one wasn't as effective. So I think the jury's really going to be out to see if we can provide effective service to these schools that need it so desperately. Also, I'd like to understand a little bit more about the centralized special education programs. Are we actually going to be moving students from some campuses to other campuses? And I noticed as I looked at the specific funding, there's a lot, there are a number of our campuses that have centralized. I don't know what that really means.
Katrina and I'll split this. There are multiple types of centralized units at our elementary campuses, and our model for administrative staffing has been if the unit is a unit that is students with emotional disturbance or students with autism, where there's a possibility of more need for administrative involvement, we have added the additional administrator, a full-time assistant principal. So Harrington Elementary is just a campus that has been left out of that inadvertently last year. So that would be the addition. And then depending on where our new behavior, self-contained behavior units are, it likely will impact one of these other campuses.
And so are you looking at an overall strategy as to where we locate special education as part of the process we're going through right now?
Yes.
Okay. I think she answered it. We're looking at expanding some existing places and then adding perhaps a couple classes. You'll see in the next slide, we're going to ask for a little additional staff for that. So I guess there's always the issue in terms of what's the most cost-effective way to do it, what fits more into campus, and we need to really struggle through that.
Okay, speaking of special education, as we know, this is a growing area within the district as far as the number of identified students and the cost to serve those students. We do have some consultants that we're looking at bringing back again next year. And so that's for both strategic planning and special education, and also starting out the Adult Transition Center. And so that would be 70,000. Cost of student placement at an autism treatment center, we currently have, I believe, four students there. This would be going to five, and that's an additional cost of 105,000, just for one student to go to that unit. Behavioral training for teachers and assistants, 183,200. I will tell you, some of what's on here is, I understand that the consultants are recommending, and our staff is, that more one-time training that we hope will pay off in the future. And so some of this staff and some of this training is to really get us over the hump, to get us on the right track. And then there's some, the plan is, a lot of this training would not continue, and some of the staff might could be decreased in future years just by looking at different staffing models and how we're actually serving those students. So behavioral training, 183,000. Addition of two centralized behavior units, eight teachers and four assistants, 563,000. So we talked about the additional administrative staff, but this is just the teachers and the assistants. Opening the Adult Transition Center requires a director, office manager, nurse. We would be pulling all the staff over that we could. They currently serve those students, but when they've looked at the staff that would be required at that facility, it would require two more assistants and one more teacher is what's planned. We might wait until we actually see what, see our students that we'll be serving before those, we'll continue to evaluate that. And then the operational budget for the Adult Transition Center, about 40,000. Some other adds in the special education department for campuses, a speech-language pathologist, four PPCD assistants, a half a PPCD teacher, one diagnostician. We currently have a point four occupational therapist, this would take that person to full-time by adding the point six, and one elementary curriculum specialist. So the total of that category is 362,000. And so that's got total special ed adds of a million 641 in salary and non-salary.
Can I ask a question about, you know, the Adult Transition Center? I'm thinking that we're going to have some cost savings as we're putting four locations into one. Is that possible, to expect that?
I think consolidating the staff and the program will help. Certainly have options about possibly saving money in the future. I think we need to pull together what we have currently the first year and see how that staffing works out. The additional request for the teacher and aides there is based on the students we know coming up who are going to be completing their graduation requirements and will be entering the program. We have some more severe behavioral needs are coming, which is why we have that added staff. So a lot of that staffing really depends on the needs of the students that are in the program at the time.
Okay. And you mentioned there's an increase in our special education population. Do we have any indication, are people moving here because of our services, or is that just the natural progression of things?
Probably a combination. We do have a lot of move-ins this year. I think we had about 400 and something students coming in from other districts. That doesn't mean, we also had some that left, so that doesn't mean we added that many to the total. But we do have a lot of move-ins that are already identified as special ed that come here.
Because I ask that because as we think about our legislative priorities, I feel like we probably want to have some, some level of ask of the state. Because when I look at 105,600 for one student, I'm not sure where we are with the state. Do they help us get hold there? I kind of don't think so. But maybe you can help us with some wording and asks for our legislative priorities, because I think special education is an area that we could use some help from the state.
It is definitely an area we don't generate enough funding to pay for the program. So it is strongly supplemented out of other funds. Okay, the next one is on safety and security. These are the numbers that Carrie and Jo went over with you. So expansion of SRO for the coming year, a million 180. Security monitors at senior high schools for those two per high school, 176,000. SRO vehicles that are non-recurring, 80,000. And the building modifications, 280,000, for a total of a million 716. When we look at total staff, as far as the adds that we do have in here, it's 41.1, full-time equivalent employees. 26.1% of those are direct instruction or support, so more directly tied to students. 14 of those are campus or teacher support. That's also where the social workers, counselors, assistant principal, and security monitors are included. And then the one for district support is the one in communications that we talked about. And so the total of those staff members is 2,066,000 projected.
This is an area that I appreciate Beth's patience with me as we've gone back and forth, and I've gone on my spreadsheet, lots of things I've looked at. I think I'm somewhat, pleased is too strong a word, but I'm glad that we're moving forward with resourcing better some of these challenged schools. I don't think we know what works yet in terms of how you do the part outside the classroom for these schools. And I look at schools like Meadows, for example, and just look at the progression, the downward progression of their star scores, 75% passing, down to 61% passing. Last year was 55% passing. So I know we have a lot of extra attention that we put there now, but we need to learn how to turn that curve up the other direction. I will use Houghman as an example, at least it's held steady. It was 70% passing, 65 and 65, so at least we're not deteriorating anymore. I look at Mitchell though, which is a school that's increasingly challenged, only 78% passing this last time. And so I hope we learn over this year what really does work, so we can start to have some long-term systemic help for these kids. Because when you flip those numbers, 55% pass, that means 45% fail. That's a lot of kids that we're not serving appropriately. I also have the plea for our principals, if you're given money, spend it. If you need money, ask for it. Because I think this board is very open to the idea of something that will improve outcomes for children. And so I wouldn't want anyone to think they're maximizing their career by not asking for help for kids.
So I just want to add a comment. I know that we are all committed to making sure that every child is going to be as successful as they possibly can be in our school district. And we've had, I think, over the last few years, recent history, an extreme commitment to equity. And we're willing to move our resources for that purpose, but I also know it's going to take some time to see the results that we want to see. So, you know, I'm, you know, asking for us to give the support that our administrators need to do the really hard work. In the amount of time, they're going to do it as fast as they possibly can, and I know that the administrators, you know, here are trying to give them as much data as possible to help them be as successful as quickly as possible. But I want to make sure that they know that we support them in doing the work. I, I know that we do, and I want to make sure that they get that message that we, we do. We want things to happen as quick as possible. I know it's going to take a few years. And I, I just want to, I understand your frustration. I just want to make sure that, just from my perspective, I just want to make sure that everybody understands, we support our teachers doing this work, we support our principals doing this work, we're doing everything we possibly can, I believe, at this point in time to help them be as successful as possible. So I just want to express that level of support.
Next, we have the department comparisons. So this is primarily the non-salary. So we were looking at the adds by board goal between salary and non-salary, or by initiative. So this is more by which department is affected on the non-salary component. And so these have been brought to you on previous years. I'm happy to go through these in as much detail as you'd like. I think you've heard most of what is incorporated in this that is, again, the non-salary components of what we've already talked about. I can give you bottom lines, and I'm more than happy to, I've got detail here as much as you want to go into. And I've got really bright people back here behind me that have been working with that detail, that have even more than I do. But when we look at academic services, we did talk about some of the reductions that were made in that area. We did have some additions, but the net of that one is down over 150,000 from 9.8 to Assessment and research is up about 30,000, but we added 62,000 in here for the high reliability schools that we talked about, the Marzano. And so there was some other reductions, but about 30,000 did come out. Campus services is up a little bit.
Randy, I'm sorry, I want to ask, back to, because it's under academic, just curious about the decrease with Avid.
Okay, I believe that was submitted as a, as a department budget decrease. And so when that was evaluated, it was just, hey, we're not spending all that we have, and so we can, so that was part of the reductions that we talked about previously. I had the same question today. So then we move into campus services, and again, that one does, that one does have an increase. Some of the increases there are the social-emotional leader stoppings of 40,000, the materials for that program of 54,400, and then also supportive of the GED program. Unfortunately, that program was somewhat self-sustaining. The number of tests that we're administering has been on the decline, I think because there's other opportunities to do that other than coming to our facility. And so we are going to have to supplement that for the coming year and continue to look at what our future model is, as far as GED testing. And then also, we talked about the summer school, about increasing that by week and removing the fees. So we're showing that as an expense. It's actually a reduced revenue, but we're just trying to give you an impact fee here. And so that was about 115,000 on summer school.
I'd also pipe up again on Plano family literacy. It's, can we afford it in this day and time? Is it providing the right services? It only serves part of the district. And as you begin your zero-based budgeting, I think it would be important to look at that as part of equity across the district. Are we providing services to children or to adults? And really be hard on ourselves about that.
And that is something that we've talked about in cabinet that we need to look at next year. We've tried to evaluate so much in the past few months that there are some programs we need more time, as Missy said, and something like that are definitely what's going to look at next year.
But everybody's clock here started at a different time period.
Right. But this, this should be something we talk about when we start strategic planning.
I agree. To me, that's a part of a conversation about all of our wraparound services and family To me, that's a part of a conversation about all of our wraparound services and family and community resources, and how do, how do those pieces fit together, and then, you know, when you look at some of the services to adults, are we replicating services that are available somewhere else in the community that we could pull into our circle to, to work with us, to deliver that, so we're not fronting that, we can use our resources in a different way. So I think, I think those are really rich opportunities for us to have some really exciting conversations about family and community resources.
Okay, business facility services, we did talk about the hundred thousand that we were putting in for the marker boards, we've got some reclasses, and the bottom line, I'm sorry, also the, as far as the utilities, we had a fairly significant increase there, everything else is pretty close to the same, and so that budget's going up about two hundred and fifty thousand.
Is that a rate increase on the utilities?
Yes, some, yes, that is rate increase. Especially trash, trash went up like a significant amount, I think it was a hundred and five thousand.
Do we need to recycle more?
I think that included recycling, so.
Is there a thing of recycling taken away?
Yeah, that would be recycling and trash, we can evaluate that and see if more recycling saves us, it's typically by the, by the number of dumpsters that you have, it's not by the volume. Okay, on employee services, this budget is almost the same, except in employee services, you see a big increase from eleven thousand to five hundred and sixty-one thousand, and no, that's not discretionary money for Beth to go spend, that is the four hundred and eighty thousand that we talked about on subs, on the extended learning, and then also the seventy thousand on ESL certification for middle schools, on ELA teachers, so that one looks big, but it's on those two initiatives. Technology services, we talked about the decrease in their budget, and so the bottom line is a, is a net decrease, I believe that was a hundred and forty-three thousand. Superintendent and board, Ms. Bondser did decrease those budgets, we looked at the past couple of years of expenditures and decreased superintendent and board of trustees, and so the decrease in that area is about fifteen thousand. Communications, it's the same budget, except for the twenty thousand dollars that was added for strategic planning consultant, so you're aware of that. As we look at campus and other allocations, those are down, and again, that's where the million, thirty-six thousand came out, and we put the four hundred and eighty, four hundred and eighty thousand in on, on employee services, so that one's, is distorted a little bit because a lot of that was a reclass. Under other allocations, the increase on infrastructure cost is the increase in appraisal district and tax collection fees, and so that's about two hundred thousand, there's, when we compare budget to what we think actual's going to be, and then we need to increase the transfer to Head Start for the matching part of that grant, that was about fifty thousand, just over forty thousand, forty-four thousand. Okay, so the bottom line with all that detail, the projected, where we're at, and our staff is still working really hard now and working with HR, but now we're in the process of getting all the right people in the system and budgeting the detail and the benefits and what fund code do they come out of, but the spreadsheets that we're working on, the big picture, like you're seeing it, we're at about a four point eight, five million dollar deficit. If we do approve the security items that were discussed tonight, that's an additional one point seven, and so we're roughly at about a, just over a six point five million dollar deficit, that number's going to change some, I don't know how much as we get into the details, as we actually go in and run, but that's where we think we're at as of today. That does have a two percent salary increase built in, and that does continue the five hundred dollar one-time payment to our employees that have been here a year, so those are continuations, those are obviously open for discussion if we want to change that, but with the preliminary budget that we bring you next month, we'll be asking for approval on this compensation plan, and so that, those are what we would recommend to you.
What was the difference, again, between a two percent and three percent, like three million dollars?
About three point two five.
Yeah.
Sure. So, yeah, it takes us up close to ten million.
Yeah.
Any questions there? Now, as we just look at what's the long-term impact, and I'll just, are we just in? So what I did is, is we talked at the last meeting about, you know, what, how much fund balance does Plano ISD need, and so now what I've tried to do is just map that out, as if, trying to make some assumptions, and so let me just run through these real quick. So the current year interest income's up about three point five million, that's more of a known, that's, we feel pretty good about that number. As we continue to lose, if we continue to lose about three hundred students a year, that's about two million dollars per year. Over an, over a four-year period, that's going to cost the district, if that, if that is realized, about twenty million dollars, because that compounds, like we talked about on pay increases, it's two million, then it's another two, and another two, and another two, and so it's two, four, you know, eight, twelve, and, and so by the, or two, four, six, eight, by the time you add all that together, it's twenty million dollars that you've spent, if you're using fund balance, over a four-year period. The available school fund amount is the one that in the first year of the biennium, or the second year it's higher, and then in the first year it goes down, and so we're estimating about seven point eight million dollars, that's why it's in and out, in and out. As we look at salary increases for the coming year, about six point five million, and then that compounds a little, just because you're giving a pay increase on, on an increased salary, and so that's projected to go six five, six six, five oh, a hundred and fifty thousand a year. The total of that over a four-year period, if you're using fund balance, is sixty-six point five million. So again, that's one of those compounding factors. Under opening new campus, we've got Early Childhood Center Four, opening in nineteen twenty, so we, rough number, we think that'll cost about half a million dollars. The following year, we have the Fine Arts Center that's opening, and we're estimating that today at about three hundred thousand, so we'd have some additional costs there. When we look at the net budget impact, if you look, just go out to nineteen twenty, because the first year's really, I'll just, I mean, the bottom line, we think we're at about a six point five million dollar deficit, next year, that number would get about almost seventeen million dollars worse, and that's not adding, I didn't figure in adding one new staff member, now I didn't figure in taking out any staff members either, so all I did was build in the raise and the reduced number of students, there's no inflationary factors built in here, so just assuming everything continues about as is, so that number would be almost seventeen million worse than this coming year, and so the total deficit for next year would be looking at about twenty-three point five million. So when you add that to the current year deficit, down on cumulative, over the two-year period, we've budgeted just over thirty million dollars of fund balance. Then when we go out to the next year, we do get the help of the available school fund going back, coming back up by seven point eight million, and so it's about one point three million worse than the prior year, and so the deficit becomes about twenty-three point five million, and when we add the budgeted fund balance, so the budgeted fund balance is about twenty-four point eight, and the cumulative amount then is fifty-four point eight over a three-year period. When we do the same thing on the next year, when we lose the available school fund, we're back to budgeting about sixteen point seven worse than the prior year, and so now we're looking at about a forty-one point five million dollar deficit, and the accumulation of all four of those years, as far as budgeted fund balance, would be about ninety-six point four million. Now, what that does in fact, really, as well, is how much money's returned at the end of the budget, and so if you said, well, there's going to be, that's going to get tighter as budgets get tighter, but let's, I mean, if we just pick a number and say, well, that's six million dollars per year that's going to be returned, then you could say, well, that's going to be twenty-four million over the four years, and so you could take that off the ninety-nine, and you could say, well, we're looking at about a seventy-five million dollar true use of fund balance. Does that kind of help give you a perspective as we look at, now that's also assuming no legislative help.
Right.
And I think that shows the importance that we need legislative help, and that's also built in an eight percent growth factor per year on property values.
Randy, can you talk about at what point we would have to borrow money to make payroll?
Yes, so, like we talked about in the last meeting, our cash flow that we needed was about a hundred and twenty-two million, we did, it was a higher-than-average on property tax collections, as David brought up, so let's say, on a typical year, you bring in ten million less than that, so that'd be about a hundred and thirty-two million of fund balance that you need just for cash flow. If you'll remember, we have the non-spendable amount out of our two hundred and twenty-seven million, so we really have about two hundred and fourteen million to spend, and then we talked about the forty million that we need to keep set aside, because when values flatten out, we're going to be paying back forty million, if it's not all in one year, it's going to be over a couple of years. So really, you're, I mean, to me, your floor amount of fund balance is about a hundred and seventy-two million, and you would, you would be borrowing money by twenty, sometime in twenty-one, twenty-two, according to these numbers.
I would think at some point, if we're losing three hundred students in each one of these years, we're also not going to renew, there's going to be some natural attrition that we won't include in the staffing model, so that's not reflected here.
It's not reflected.
So it could be a tiny bit better picture.
I guess it could.
Why are we assuming zero interest income for the next, is it just because you don't know the amount, or what?
No, it's just not increasing it anymore, so we're increasing it up to six and a half million this coming year, but not knowing what rates are going to do. The other thing is, as we start using fund balance, we're going to have less money invested, and that's going to have the opposite effect of where we're going, so rates may be going up, but we're going to have less money invested, so we, we're just saying that staying with about the six point five million in interest income. So there's a whole lot of variables we can build in here, some favorable, some unfavorable, and I just tried to take that out of the equation and keep it simple of, if we, we expect we're going to lose ADA, we expect, if we can get pay increases, just to give you an idea of what you're looking at.
And I think we're really going to have to question some of our assumptions about staffing, does a school with only three hundred and fifty students really need a full-time assistant principal? Does a school of that size really need a full-time instructional specialist? And so we've made some assumptions about equal that we're going to have to look at hard. Also, I hope as part of the District of Innovation, we put in there that we will have potential to weigh class sizes, so if we have one extra kid come to Wyatt, it won't cost us a twenty thousand dollar teacher, so.
That's slated to come to the board in June.
So those are other areas, not that we'll be happy pursuing any of those choices, but they can keep all of our campuses moving forward.
Everything will be, need to be considered.
Your assumption of property value growth of eight percent, that's year-over-year in each one of the next four years?
That's correct.
And the impact of Robin Hood Chapter Forty-One is incorporated here?
I'm sorry, say that second part again?
The impact of Chapter Forty-One, recapture.
Yeah, so basically, it's saying, so we're projecting going up eight percent this coming year.
Right.
And so it's basically offsetting the amount of additional revenue that we receive is going for recapture, except, well, really about two million more will be going to recapture because we've got a loss of ADA.
So you're not assuming an increase in recapture compared to next year?
I'm in, I'm assuming an increase in property tax and recapture that are equivalent.
Okay. Which so far has not been the case, we had seen a greater increase in recapture than what we collected.
It's all dependent on how much your values go up compared to the prior year, so as long, so if you go from six percent growth one year to eight percent growth the next year to ten percent growth, and last year we had ten point eight, so part of that was being caused by you were, you were growing more than your recapture, I mean, you were growing more than your wealth.
Right. Yep. Okay.
Such a crazy system, I got to meet a trustee from Carizo Springs, which is down near San Antonio, they've got about three thousand kids in their district, they paid forty-five million dollars in recapture, because right now the oil fields are producing. Three thousand kids, forty-five million dollars.
We should start digging for oil.
Well, the scary part of this is, we actually have a fund balance that we can use in the next few years, a lot of districts don't, and so it's incumbent upon the legislature to come up with a finance system that will address the needs to educate our students in the future, because if we don't invest in our kids now, we're not going to have the job growth that Texas wants, we have to be able to have an educated workforce.
Absolutely.
Are we good?
So, so where we go from here, we're planning on bringing you a preliminary budget on May twenty-second, that will be pretty detailed, and then coming back on June twelfth for adoption of the budget. Is there any other information that you would like at the first May meeting, or are you okay with us bringing you the preliminary budget in detail on the twenty-second?
I think we've covered all the bases, so I'm.
We were hoping you would say that.
I think you've covered all the bases. See, I'm sticking with the whole baseball thing, I barely noticed that. So I think it sounds appropriate for you to bring the detail based upon what you presented.
Okay, that's fine, great.
Okay, thank you very much. Last item relates to any topics for the future work session, we're at the end of the year, we've scheduled everything that we've talked about so far.
I'm just really looking forward to May when we talk about dual credit and our fourth Early Childhood Center.
All right, hearing done. At nine fifty-five, this meeting is adjourned.